Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome out to our regular meeting here at City Plaza Drive. And for the time, for the official time, it's 1:07. If you'll call a roll, please.
Mayor Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Cantu.
Here.
Chief. Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please, sir?
My pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing for a brief moment of silence for our military that have been engaged in action and that no harm will come our way. Thank you. Council, we have approval of the agenda next.
Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, two items. First of all, in addition, on 7A awards and recognitions, we'd like to add 7C proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th. And in addition, after consulting with the town attorney and some of our senior councilmen, we would like to table 10 public hearings, A Ordinance 14-05, adopting a new zoning map for further investigation. Since this was a public hearing and was duly advertised, we would like to have this matter continued. By law, it needs to be continued to a specific time and location, and I would recommend that we continue it to our next regular meeting 14 days from today at 1:00 P.M.
Okay. So when we get to that item, we'll take care of that item and duly noted that we will motion to table, if that be the wishes of the council.
Motion. Motion to approve. Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
As amended.
Yes.
So we have a second to that.
Second.
Okay, and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu.
Yes.
So move on to approval of the minutes, August 25, 2014, special meeting minutes, council.
Move to approve.
So motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
So we have September 9, 2014, regular meeting minutes, so council.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
There are a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, none seen one? None. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta.
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu.
Yes.
Okay. So next, we move on. The agenda, we're going to awards and recognitions, and from the office in the council of mayor, we will, we have a proclamation to present, and then we have John Thompson from the airport, and we'll be doing a presentation. So the proclamation that we have set forth before us is, it reads, "Whereas the state's aviation industry contributes a significant amount of economic benefit to the state, and whereas there are 61 public-use airports in the state, serving 6,738 pilots and 4,075 general aviation aircraft, and whereas the aviation industry employs over 7,700 New Mexicans directly and indirectly, generating $1.3 billion in payroll, and whereas the aviation industry plays a vital role in the lives of our citizens as well as in the operation of our businesses and agriculture, and whereas business aviation is a critical tool for companies in New Mexico to improve efficiency, save money, and open opportunities for rural areas not served by commercial aviation, thereby bringing new business investment and jobs to all areas of the state, and whereas general aviation plays a vital role in the state response to emergency and national disasters, and whereas the continued vitality of aviation, aerospace, aircraft manufacturing, educational institutions, and aviation organizations is important to the daily function of our society, and whereas the industry will continue to play a vital role in the economic and social well-being of the state of New Mexico. Now therefore, I, Dan Barone, mayor of the Town of Taos, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as Aviation Month." So I'd like to recognize, you know, the aviation, and John, I'm going to turn it over to you because it's an exciting time, exciting things continue to happen within our own community, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Mayor and council, I thank you for allowing me a few minutes to recognize some of the contributions of aviation in our community and the state as you designate September as Aviation Appreciation Month. There's many ways Taos benefits from aviation, such as medevac flights, firefighting operations, search and rescue with both ground crews and aircraft, education through Civil Air Patrol and AIM Higher program at the Taos Middle School, the Experimental Aircraft Association's Young Eagles events, like the one we held three days ago at the Taos Airport, where kids ages eight to 18 got to go for a ride, got to go for a flight at no charge. Also, recreation and sightseeing flights, as well as business. One of the many medevac companies that use Taos Regional Airport is Tri-State Care Flight. They are a round-the-clock critical care transport service with facilities at the Taos Airport. Studies show that medevac transport of trauma patients has reduced the number of days needed in the hospital and in the ICU, and can result in better patient outcomes. Medical crews in both helicopters and critical care ground ambulances bring skills, expertise, medications, and equipment directly to patients and continue the highest level of patient care during transport. Medevac helicopters allow approximately 38 percent more of the population to have access to trauma center care within the timeframe for the best clinical outcome. Medevac helicopters travel at an estimated speed of two miles per minute, roughly twice the speed of ground ambulances. Factory in traffic in densely populated areas and helicopter transportation is even faster. Every 90 seconds in the United States alone, a medevac helicopter responds to a call to help a person in need. Almost 50 million Americans live more than an hour away from a Level 1 or 2 trauma center, and your recognition of Care Flight's lifesaving efforts and aviation skills gives them the honor they deserve in our community. So now, if I could have Adam here, a representative for Care Flight, to come forward, we'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation for the work you guys do for the Taos community. This certificate of appreciation reads, "The mayor and town council, on behalf of the citizens of Taos, would like to express our appreciation for your dedication and service to the safety and welfare of the residents of Taos and Taos County. Thank you for your fast and efficient response times that saved lives in our community. Your lifesaving efforts are greatly appreciated and make Taos a safer place to live. Presented this 23rd day of September 2014. Signed by Mayor Barone and Rick Bellis, Town Manager."
Thank you, John. Mayor, town council, thank you. On behalf of Care Flight and our base here at Taos, I'd like to thank you for this certificate of appreciation. The job that we do is only possible in conjunction with local EMS, law enforcement, fire, and hospital staff. And if anyone is interested in the operation of our base here at the airport in Taos, feel free to stop by at our offices and say hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Civil Air Patrol. Civil Air Patrol is a federally chartered nonprofit organization that serves as the civilian U.S. Air Force auxiliary that has served for over 65 years. Civil Air Patrol has three main missions. The mission of aerospace education is to educate, inspire, and instill an appreciation for and an understanding of aerospace as it relates to science, technology, engineering, and math in today's and tomorrow's world. Civil Air Patrol, or CAP, promotes and supports aerospace and STEM education, both for its members and for the general public. CAP's educational programs help prepare youth of today to meet the challenges of a sophisticated aerospace and STEM society and understand its related global issues, especially as it pertains to national security. Their cadet programs division is designed to help leadership, or to develop leadership skills, moral values, and foster cooperation amongst our youth and the community. Much of the information learned can be applied outside the Civil Air Patrol, but can also be used in preparation for military, government, and industrial service. Also, their emergency services serve as the air branch of the New Mexico Department of Public Safety's Search and Rescue Division. Civil Air Patrol participates as a member of the New Mexico Emergency Services Council. Emergency Services trains the members for operations as air crew, ground team, flight line operations, and mission staff. And now, if we have any members of Civil Air Patrol with us, I'd like you to come forward, and we'd like to present you also with a certificate of appreciation for the work you do for the Taos community. And not seeing any of the members here, I'd still like to read the certificate, and I will get that to them. The certificate of appreciation reads, "The mayor and town council, on behalf of the citizens of Taos, would like to express our appreciation for your dedication to emergency services, cadet programs, and aerospace education. Your efforts in search and rescue operations greatly enhance the safety of the public in the remote wilderness areas of northern New Mexico. Thank you for your lifesaving efforts that make Taos a safer place to live. Presented this 23rd day of September 2014." The Taos Regional Airport Advisory Board is made up of five members of the community representing different areas of expertise in Taos County. The Airport Advisory Board may recommend to the town council such rules and regulations as it may deem necessary and expedient for the proper operation and management of the airport and its related properties and facilities. The board is made up of five members. Don Francisco Trujillo, board chairman, previously served as New Mexico's Deputy Secretary of State and Director of the New Mexico State Bureau of Elections from 2007 to 2010, an elected Taos County Commissioner from 2003 to 2006, Director of Sales and Marketing for the Town of Taos, and Chairman of the Intergovernmental Council of the Enchanted Circle in northern New Mexico. He has held positions with several local, state, and national boards. Tim Cotum, Vice Chair, is the owner of Cotum Construction and is a local pilot and member of Civil Air Patrol. Clyde Romero Jr. is the Taos Pueblo Tribal Government Appoyee to the board and serves as Taos Pueblo's representative on the board. Mark Fratrick is the village administrator for the Village of Taos Ski Valley and is the former airport manager. And Lindsey Webb is also a local business owner, pilot, and member of Civil Air Patrol. And if we have any members of the Airport Advisory Board that have made it in yet, I'd like for them to come forward also as we present you with a certificate of appreciation. This certificate of appreciation reads, "Taos Regional Airport Advisory Board. The mayor and town council, on behalf of the citizens of Taos, would like to express our appreciation for your dedication and service to the Taos Regional Airport Advisory Board. Thank you for your efforts to ensure Taos Regional Airport's continued excellence as an asset to the Town of Taos. It's people like you giving back to the community that make Taos such a great place to live." Presented to Don Francisco Trujillo II, Chair, Tim Cotum, Vice Chair, Clyde Romero Jr., Mark Fratrick, and Lindsey Webb. Presented this 23rd day of September 2014.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our airport manager, members of the administration, my fellow Taos citizens, thank you. We appreciate being recognized. Usually, we just meet every other month, and we sit in a room all by ourselves with some of the local pilots and people that use the airport, discussing what we need to do with upcoming events at the airport. Our engineers are always there from Armstrong, and as you know, we're building a $22 million airport runway, I'm sorry, and I know some people may not be too excited about that, but I think the majority of us are. And the one thing that my friend John forgot to mention is that I do have 15 years of airline experience with Idaho Mexico Airlines, and I was the international manager for overseeing Europe, the United States, and South America. So that's where I get my airport knowledge from. But again, thank you on behalf of all of us. We truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Aerial firefighting operations have become a critical resource around the country and have been used extensively in New Mexico to deliver supplies to large crews of firefighters in remote areas. During critical fire seasons, aerial firefighting crews have been stationed at the Taos Airport for quick response with repelling crews and a 500-gallon dip bucket under a helicopter. Single-engine air tankers, or SEAT planes, and heavy lift helicopters were used during the Insabato Fire right here in our own community. The Taos Airport supports aircraft used for reconnaissance to help keep our community safe when forest fires threaten, and they're also used for dropping retardant and water on these fires as quickly as they can get there. When it comes to education, in addition to Civil Air Patrol's education program, AIM Higher, a program of the Blue Sky Education Foundation, promotes compelling aviation-focused science, technology, engineering, and math education with the goal of helping engage students in school, particularly in science, technology, engineering, and math fields. The AIM Higher curriculum is offered right here at our Taos Middle School. The Young Eagles program was developed in 1992 by the Experimental Aircraft Association to welcome young people into aviation. Aviation is exciting and vital to our nation's future, and the best way to convey that message is to actually experience flight in a firsthand setting. Over the years, more than 1.8 million Young Eagles have experienced free flights, introducing them to aviation in nearly every type of general aviation aircraft, from light planes to business jets and everything in between. The pilots participating in the Young Eagles program are local members of the Experimental Aircraft Association who volunteer their time and aircraft to make hundreds of flights possible for our local children. Saturday's events, Saturday's event at the Taos Airport provided 26 kids with a free flight, many of which actually flew the airplanes. One local pilot commented at the end of the day that the kids he flew were able to hold their altitude to within 10 feet and hold their course heading within a couple of degrees, and I got to tell you, that's something that even experienced pilots sometimes have a hard time doing. 2014 marks the 32nd Annual Taos Mountain Balloon Rally, with normally 35 to 50 balloons participating. At least two local companies offer hot air balloon rides in the Taos area. Sightseeing, either from hot air balloon or conventional airplane, offers breathtaking views of the Rio Grande and the Sangre de Cristal Mountains. Several flight instructors also offer beginner and advanced training in Taos, including mountain flying and instruction in tailwheel aircraft. Several locals have achieved their goal to get their pilot's license in the past few years, including Martina Gebhardt and Lindsey Webb, one of our Airport Advisory Board members. Business aviation allows for efficient, flexible, safe, and secure, cost-effective access to destinations across the country and around the world. Because employees can meet, plan, and work with each other aboard business aircraft, productivity and route is greatly enhanced. Helicopter crews conduct inspections of electric transmission lines with the ability to access remote areas, enhancing reliability and often locating problems before critical failures occur. Wildlife populations and the health of herds is monitored each year. Insect surveys are also conducted to monitor the health of the forests. National Guard uses the latest technology for search and rescue operations. Most of the military operations in the area are National Guard humanitarian efforts like search and rescue and Civil Air Patrol. Medical transportation from Taos to Denver, normally a five-hour drive, is accomplished in about 35 minutes in many of the medevac jets that service the Taos community, reaching critical care facilities in a fraction of the time ground transportation takes. According to a study by the Alliance for Aviation Across America, general aviation in New Mexico contributes $761 million annually to the state's economy. There are 61 public-use airports in the state, serving over 5,000 New Mexico pilots and over 4,000 aircraft registered in the state. According to the study, aviation in New Mexico supports more than 49,000 jobs, either directly or indirectly, which generates over $1 billion in payroll in the state. In 2013, Taos Regional Airport supported over 6,300 aircraft takeoffs and landings, with a staff of no more than six Taos Aviation Services and Town of Taos employees combined. Aviation in New Mexico, and even Taos County, plays a big role in most of our lives, whether we realize it or not. Most of us have family members or friends who've been flown out of Taos for medical treatment. All of us have high hopes for a safe outcome when we hear that search and rescue has been deployed. Many of our children are excited and just can't wait for the next Young Eagles event. Aviation is a vital part of this community, and mayor and council, I speak for the aviation community in Taos to thank you for this proclamation of Aviation Appreciation Month in September 2014.
Thank you, John. It was an honor. Appreciate it. So next on the agenda is Employee of the Month. This is one of those pleasant things you really like to be a part of. Council members, you know, we've all decided that this is a great thing. We need to really honor our employees of the Town of Taos. We have some great employees, and we want to continue to honor them and make sure that they feel like that they're a great part of our community and they do a lot of work for us. Without going on anymore, I'm going to turn the time over to Amy from our HR department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This afternoon, we'd like to recognize one of our employees, Mayor Barone. Town manager Rick Bellis and the employee recognition team have selected Judy Esquivel as our Employee of the Month for the month of September. So if Judy is here, I'd like to call her up to the front. Judy has been organizing community events for 16 years, most of which benefit the children of the Taos community. Her extraordinary efforts, organizational skills, and creativity have increased the total number of events per year to over 30. Judy, along with a team of volunteers from the community, prepares approximately 2,000 gift bags a year that are distributed to children throughout the Taos community. She also receives donations from local businesses to help with the events, pre-planning, marketing, ordering small gifts, decorating, and cleanup. Judy joined the library staff nearly a year ago. She has taken to learning new skills, including a complicated library operating system, with a good-natured enthusiasm. Her infectious can-do energy and initiative taking for new potential programs activities has made her a valuable asset to the library and to the whole Town of Taos organization. Judy's extra effort and innovation is a perfect example of professionalism and dedication to excellent service to the Taos community. The Town of Taos would like to congratulate Judy on this prestigious award. We're giving her an appreciation certificate that says she's been designated as the Employee of the Month for the month of September. Thank you, Judy, so much. And we also have two gift certificates for you and also a day of leave. Payton, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Mayor, I'd also like to add that we're very fortunate that after some discussions and a little moving around in the budget, that Judy will be coming back to us full-time in coordinating our events and historical events that she's done, as well as helping us with downtown events, and I'm going to be very happy to have her assistance on that.
Congratulations, Judy. Judy, thank you for all the hard work, and we look for that continued effort that you continue to have. Thank you. So in moving on, we have under presentations, a presentation by Ms. Stoner and her son. And Rick, before we turn it over to you, this is a young, is she here, Ms. Stoner? Oh, there she is, and her son's there. You know, she came to our office, my office, and she asked if... You know, she came to our office, my office, and she asked if she has a sphere or a crystal that she would like to present to the Town of Taos as a gift. And I'm going to let her speak to what it represents, you know, and she would like to place it on top of the gazebo in the plaza. And so, Ms. Stoner, you would, Rick, did you have anything to add?
No. As curious as you are.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilors, and all the townsfolk that are here. I must say that I am truly honored to have the opportunity to talk to you about my dream. But before that, I have to say how honored I am to be here, to hear the wonderful work that the people do for this town that you have just honored. I've always thought that Taos is very special. I live here half the time, as you can hear by my accent, I'm obviously English. And so, I live here half the time, and I live in England half the time. I live in England by the river, not far from London, and I live here, up close to the mountains. How blessed I am. And I would like to give something back to the town here that I live in. So I'm going to make it short, because I can see that there is a lot on the agenda, so I'm going to make it very short. I have to say that I'm a complimentary therapist, and I'm very much a believer in crystals. And I have been able to purchase this beautiful rainbow crystal. And I'd like to just tell you its qualities, and this is what it will bring to this beautiful, beautiful town. It's a guardian spirit, and which will protect the town. It keeps away impish spirits and creates unity. It dispels negativity, hell, we all need that, and helps to let go of the past. It helps to see the future with clarity, increases creativity and joy in this period of transformation. And I'm sure you know that we are going through this transition at this time, so many things are happening. But also, it opens new horizons. And so, once again, being here today, and to listen to about the airport, how new horizons that is, and so this indeed, this beautiful crystal will actually do that. And the other thing is, it vibrates with the numbers three and seven. Now, often with crystals, we wonder, do they really work? Is this really what they're doing? And so, I would just like to say one very short story about this, that when I purchased this beautiful sphere, which I have to say comes from a wonderful company in Mexico, so I wanted a sphere that would be on this landmass, and so I was so blessed that the gentleman from this mine, this obsidian mine, came down to Pamela at the shop opposite Albertson's, and brought this wonderful sphere. And I was able to purchase at a very reasonable price of $629. When I got home, and my friends in Henley are also extremely interested in what's going on here, they, one of them said to me, "Well, how much did that cost in English money? Would you like to know?" And I said, "Well, that would be interesting." And he had an app on his telephone, and he said, "I just thought that out for you." And would you believe that the numbers that came up was $373.37? So if that was a confirmation that 37, 37, 37 is what vibrates with this particular sphere, then I don't know what is. And so, Mr. Mayor and councilors, I am truly grateful to you for listening to my story. Just to briefly tell you that my son, James, would you like to come up, James? He's a blacksmith. He actually lives in Oro Esteco, and he will, if we're allowed to put it on a gazebo, if we are allowed to, then he is going to make it with a collar around it. Would you like to say?
Yeah, good afternoon, good afternoon, town councilors. I'm Jim Stoner. I'm a 10-year resident of Taos. I run my own blacksmith shop in Oro Esteco. And what we would be proposing is a steel ring for the sphere to sit in, and four forged steel feathers to hold the sphere in place, with three or four brackets attached to the center of the gazebo. And also, in the ring would be seven smaller...
Six.
Six, sorry, spheres into the ring as well, which we think would be a really nice feature for the gazebo, and it would be a handmade piece of art, so it would be a beautiful thing for Tausenios and tourists alike.
And I just wanted to say, the six, the reason I corrected by some which I wouldn't normally do, is because the six small ones, the black obsidians, will then resonate with the rainbow obsidian making several. And so, we've tried to think of sacred geometry and all that sort of thing to actually make it really special. And so, I'd like to thank you all very much for listening to us, and I hope that we will be able to get to the gazebo at some stage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we work a sprig of red willow into that?
Yes. Mr. Lopez, is there anything that would keep us from doing this?
I'm pleased.
Okay. Counsel, it is on the agenda for discussion, consideration, possible action. Is there anything?
Mr. Mayor, the only reservations I have about putting it up now is, what are we doing with the gazebo? I know we had looked at some structural issues with it and revamping it. Mr. Manager, I don't know if that's part of the plaza master plan, so maybe shed some light before we accept it and then take it down and move it.
Certainly, we're going to look at the bathrooms underneath, and we have to make a decision about that and the engineering and electrical under it. And we've had some discussions about how to modify the gazebo so it would be, have a better clear span for performances. But I think, and I'll defer to Steve on this, most of the discussions we've had included the idea that if we were going to do something, including relocation with the gazebo, we would dismantle it and then reassemble it again. So I don't see that any of those plans would interfere with what's being proposed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. As far as I know, the gazebo will stay as it is for the foreseeable future. My concern would be where in the gazebo we put it, because we do set up bands and audiovisual equipment. So if you approve it, we'll find a place for them to put it.
Well, right now, it's shown as being on the crown of the roof. And that's what my concern was, was structural stability, of what kind of shape that roof
Well, as it turns out, for the concert we're going to have on Thursday, we reapplied the copper paneling on the roof, so all the work we're going to do up there is done. The only thing I would think of is maybe a lightning issue if we use metal, but I think there's a lightning rod up there now. So, on top of the roof, I don't see any problem with that. I'd run it past Judy, but I think we should be able to do that.
So, Counsel, I guess would ask, we can leave this up to Mr. Bellis to find a place and make sure that it's appropriate and it'll all work.
I'm okay with that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. You get a motion to that effect?
Some move, Mr. Mayor.
You have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing non-call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Petalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
So, thank you. Ms. Stoner, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. If you'll work with Rick. Thank you. So we'll go on to item B, regional water planning.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we skipped 7C.
7C, I did skip 7C, I'm sorry. We'll go on to resolution. Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, this is a proclamation, proclamation of the Town of Taos by the mayor and council, declaring September 15th to October 15th, 2014 to be Hispanic Heritage Month. Miss, D, Herencia Hispania. Whereas September 15th through October 15th, 2014 is National Hispanic Heritage Month, and whereas the month is used to recognize the contributions of Hispanic and Latino-Americans, from national leaders and historic figures to everyday Americans throughout the history of our country. And whereas the National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the long rich Hispanic heritage and culture we share in the United States and New Mexico. And whereas the 50.5 million Americans of Hispanic and Latino origin make up in excess of 16% of our nation's population, and have made profound and indelible impacts on our creating this nation, from discovery and exploration to defending and extending our freedoms at home, and extending our system of government to the world, and influencing our cherished national values of family, faith, and community. Now be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Town of Taos that September 15th through October 15th shall heretofore be declared annually in the Town of Taos as Hispanic Heritage Month in honor of the many contributions of our current and past residents, community leaders, artists and artisans, farmers and caretakers of our land and water, teachers, healers, mothers and fathers, and families that have contributed so much of themselves every day to make this community and our state rich in spirit, rich in culture, rich in history, and rich in family, community, and promise. Signed this 23rd day of September, 2014. Daniel R. Brownie, Frederick Lee Peralta, Andrew T. Gonzalez, Judy Cantu, George Fritz
All right. We need to...
Some move.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion, non-call for the vote. Motion to approve the proclamation.
Councilmember Petalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you. So now, we'll go on to a regional water plan. We're going to turn to you, Rick, and then we'll, we have Ms. Rosemary Romero here, but I don't know if you have anything to add before she does.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, other than to say that in my capacity as planning director at the county, I had the ability to work with Rosemary on several issues. And I am proud to say that in this county, I think we had somewhat of a head start with our Water Advisory Board and our regional water planning process. We just want to keep that up, and Rosemary has been a great facilitator to that process. Obviously, water doesn't become less important over time, it becomes more important, and welcome.
And Rosemary, thank you for being here. I've been able to have the opportunity to work with you on several occasions, and great, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilors, and community members. I'm really honored to be here. I have two German friends who are visiting and thought it'd be a great adventure for them to come and see downtown Taos while I presented. So, Mr. Mayor, I think you said I'd have about seven minutes, and so I'm going to be...
Oh, just teasing.
Okay, I want to be sensitive to your agenda. Let me say this, Rick, thank you so much. I believe Taos is much further ahead than most of the other regions. I am a consultant to the Interstate Stream Commission Office of the State Engineer to help organize and facilitate the process of updating the 16 regional water plans. We started the process in March of 2014, and then completed our last outreach to the Gila area. We left the hardest for last, as you probably figured out, and so we wrapped up the outreach to the Silver City region in August, mid-August or so, and so that Phase 1 is already completed. I worked on the Taos Regional Water Plan back in 2000, I want to say 2004, '05, '06-ish, and so yours was the last plan that was completed. But I must say, I think it was one of the better plans with your public welfare statement, and as Rick noted, you've got a lot of momentum going forward. So, for folks who were at the original presentation that we did in March, Mayor Barone, you were there, and Counselor Cantu, I believe you were there, so I will give a brief overview. I've brought some handout materials. But I'd like to, for folks who are in the audience, I think it's important to ground everyone on what the regional water plan will be doing. So to be clear is, the state started to work on the state water plan. They hit a little bit of a wall because the regions weren't cohesive. They were all very different. So this new version, this new updated version of the plans is to create a technical platform that's all being done at the same time, that is the same information, and will be much more seamless with the state water plan. And I would encourage you all to stop me at any point if there's a question that we can answer immediately. So, the technical platform is now being completed. One of the reasons I'm in a little bit of a rush, I will say, is that we decided that there was about four regional areas that the technical platforms will be done. Yours will be completed in mid-October, and that will be presented to the steering committee. So we are a little bit eager to finalize the steering committee. But again, the regional handbook, which I hope was in your packet, but if not, I've brought extras of that, which is this regional, this is the handbook that we are working from. It sets out the roles of the state and the regions. It identifies an approach for forming a representative steering committee to develop strategies and identify projects to be funded. The scope of the update is to build on the existing plans. We're not doing anything brand-new. It's building on those plans that you've already been working from, so that we're not going backwards. It's updating key data to reflect the changed conditions. It's a two-year process based on funding availability, and these updated plans are going to follow much more closely to the Water Trust Board funding, which has always been a challenge for the Water Trust Board. So that was Year 1. Year 2, if funding is available, and I think we're working on this, in Year 2, we are, where we're at is the regions will get about $35,000 or so. The first year, they'll get about $15,000, and that covers a facilitator and a technical writer. As folks who worked on any of the original water plans, the regions were given a chunk of money, they had to go out and hire their own consultants, hydrologists, attorneys, and that process took a long time, and that's the process that was inconsistent with the data. So this round, you're being given the technical platforms, and so the smaller amount of money will be for the facilitation, technical writing. So the regional water planning steering committees will direct completion of the updated plans. Where we see they're going to contract with a technical and facilitation support, that has changed. The small amount of money will be going through the ISC for the technical writer and facilitator, because the thinking was that the regions would then have to issue RFPs, it's going to take a lot longer. So there is a roster of facilitators, technical writers, and Joanne Hilton and I would like to offer our services to the Taos area for the facilitation, technical writing, because we know this region. I think it's, we helped write the public involvement plan that many of the folks are now leaning on. So that's our hope, is that you'll say yes. I know Taos County has said that makes sense to them also. You will be drafting, this is the steering committee, will be drafting and implementing the public outreach plan, but quite frankly, you've got a really good public involvement plan. My encouragement will be to update that plan. This is the big part of what the steering committees will be doing, identifying and implementing strategies. These are programs, policies, and projects to meet future water demand. And then finally, finalizing the regional water plan update and submitting it for acceptance to the ISC. In January 2015, we've outlined in the handbook the sections B, D, E, F, G, and H. This means that the technical writer would be helping you do the introduction, the background information, the legal issues, the water supply and demand, population and economic trends, future water projections, and the gap between supply and demand. The technical report is being developed by DB Stevens and Associates for all the regions. What the regions have had input into, and I believe many of you have talked to Bruce Poster or Marcia Kaplan and DB Stevens, but Bruce Poster in particular has worked on the population economic data, and any recent studies or reports that include population projections, major projects, or initiatives that will affect employment. Good to hear that the airport brings in as much money as it does, that is a significant factor for any community. Significant residential developments, anticipated changes in key sectors, and then individuals with, key individuals to interview. So again, input from the regions included technical and legal information. Rick, I think you were one of those that was also interviewed by the technical team. Water planning documents or local studies, significant water issues, local water-related programs or initiatives, local ordinances to address water or land use, pending or threatened litigation or lawsuits related to water, and key... litigation or lawsuits related to water, and key individuals to interview. So I've said that pretty fast, but I want you to focus on the steering committee. The Interstate Stream Commission handbook, the regional water planning handbook, gives guidance to what the steering committee should look like. The steering committee composition will include representatives of both surface water and groundwater users, municipal and county government, rural water providers, extractive industry, environmental interest, local business, tribal entity as appropriate. And for this area, you have Taos Pueblo and Picadis Pueblo. Watershed interests, I've worked on the Red River watershed, there's the Upper Rio Grande watershed. There's watershed interests. Federal agencies, significant land management agencies in the area that include Forest Service, BLM, National Park Service, and other groups as identified by the steering committee. I'll say that that is the most important part that gives the regions a little bit of flexibility on who other groups that you feel should be on the steering committee. The first year of the steering committee work, the responsibilities of the steering committee, will be to address the handbook's sections C and I, which includes the public participation. I'm sorry, counselor?
If I could, Rosemary?
Absolutely.
The size of the steering committee, what do you envision that to be?
So let me... Thank you. That's a great question, is let me give you a couple of examples, because I envision about fifteen to twenty people max, because you don't want it any bigger than that. It gets unwieldy. However, steering committees, what I have seen them do has been to create subcommittees or task force as needed, but to convene yourselves, I would say fifteen to eighteen people. I just wrapped up populating the Mora San Miguel Guadalupe Regional Water Plan Steering Committee, and that's three counties. So just to remind us, the three counties, they decided what they would do is, I think they've got about eighteen people on their steering committee, and they've designated alternates, because a lot of the folks that you're going to have on the steering committee are elected officials. So they thought it was important to have alternates. So what Mora San Miguel did was, for example, Les Montoya will be on, he's the manager, San Miguel County manager, but he's going to name one of their utility people to be his alternate. So that kind of makes the committee grow by default. Hopefully, they wouldn't all show up at once, but I think fifteen to eighteen is a good number.
So according to your map, then, all, each one of these different colored regions would have a steering committee?
Yes.
And how do they then report to the state engineer, or to the Interstate Stream Commission, or Water Board, or whatever?
So the work of the steering committee will be to address specific elements of the regional water planning effort, which are how do you meet the demand? What are the strategies? It'll take you about a year to do that work. You will reach consensus, I would imagine, is the process that you would reach to develop the strategies that are best for the region. And this is a large region, as you know. It's... I ran meetings in Severo, and Red River, and Taos Ski Valley, Pñasco. It was a little bit of a bigger process before, and that one took a lot longer. This one, we envision, would be about a year. You, the steering committee, would reach consensus on those strategies, and when the plan is written by the technical writer, that plan is presented to the Interstate Stream Commission. Now, before, they had to approve that plan. Now it's sent to the ISC for bringing it in. There's not a vote on their side that says yes or no. It's submitted to the ISC, because it shouldn't be as much work and as challenging as that first water plan was. So it should take about a year. You would do your own work on the steering committee with a facilitator and a technical writer, and at the end of the technical writer's synthesizing all the information, that would be presented to the ISC.
Thank you.
So the... I think the steering committee... Oh, I'm going to go back. Should I go back? Let's see here, if I can go back. I'm going to need a little bit of technical help. This one? Okay. Thank you. The steering committee composition, again, just to be clear, I think this is about the eighteen to twenty folks. The northeast region is one that's also... They've put their committee together. That's being direct... Not directed, I think Sharon King, who is the mayor of Portales, stepped up just to help organize. In this planning region, Nathan Sanchez at Taos County has been really helpful, because there's a master list that are being held there. He's offered to contact the different entities within the municipalities, like the ski basin and others. So I'm getting some support from Nathan to do it, but I'll be taking on the majority of that work. So again, the steering committee responsibilities are going to be addressing the handbook's sections C and I, so I'll encourage you to look at the handbook. You'll be doing the public participation plan, which you've already got a plan, just updating that. The big part of it will be the strategies to meet future water demand, and then identification of the strategies to address water supply-demand gap and regional goals. That was a really fast version, but I know many of you have already heard it, and there's many folks in the room who've probably been through the original process. Angela Bordigary is the state water planner, and her contact information is listed above, as well as my contact, both email and phone. I will say, all of this information, including the handbook, or the websites are listed above. You all should have received what we call the steering committee letter that has all of the contact information on that. And with that said, let me note that Counselor Han did contact me via email, and I believe copied you, Mr. Mayor, as well as Angela Bordigary, indicating his interest in serving on the steering committee. So I'll leave it to each of the entities to appoint the people that really want to take the time to meet with their colleagues and neighbors to develop a regional water plan. And we'll say I was really quite proud of the work that we did on the original water plan and the public welfare statement. So this is a much more refined way of doing the planning effort, and we think it's working really well. I'm hitting the ground running now, just kind of egging the regions that are ready to get their technical platforms presented to them, and that will be the other thing. I'm hoping that when you have populated the steering committee, we can set a date to get the technical platform presented to the steering committee, and I would hope that that would be by the week of October twenty-seventh, if not the week before. That's pretty fast. But I had hoped that this steering committee, because we've presented in March, would have been a little bit further ahead, but you know, I think you're right where you need to be. So that's why I'm coming back, full circling to the regions that we did first. So Mora San Miguel Guadalupe has their steering committee. They just got theirs wrapped up last week. It shouldn't be difficult. I think you've had folks coming to many of the meetings from the Forest Service and others, and in your public involvement plan that I wrote for you before, all of the information on folks to contact, certainly it's dated, but it would be well worth looking at the public involvement plan that I did bring extras for you to look at. So with that, I'll stand for other questions from the council as appropriate.
Counsel?
Do you already have a committee in the works?
Counselor, what I've got is, what I've done for this region is I put together a proposed steering committee, and I started to put into this proposed representation categories. So like in the... So if I could, I'll hand this to you. So what I've done has been to take the category... And I've actually cheated, let me just say that. I borrowed this list from the Middle Rio Grand Group, because they're really much... They're really far ahead on putting their steering committee together. So I took the matrix that they developed. It has the steering committee criteria, which are categories, the name of the person that should be named, and then organization and representation. In meeting with Paula Garcia from the New Mexico Aseca Association, she was going to conduct her own meeting with the Asekias to see how they wanted to be represented in any of the steering committees, because the areas that have most of the Asekias are going to be the Taos Regional Water Planning Area, Mora San Miguel Guadalupe, and then several others. And then I've got, you'll see here, Town of Taos, Town of Taos Ski Valley, Town of Red River, Village Acosta, Taos County, Taos Oil and Water Conservation District, Pueblo of Taos, Picadis Pueblo, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, because they're very helpful. This is the COG, Council of Governments folks. They would be a resource to eat. They've been coming up as resources to each of the regions. I just put Amigos Brazos in here as a... Under the conservation organization, Red River Watershed, USDA or NRCS, US Forest Service, New Mexico State Forestry, New Mexico Environment Department, UNM. But I left blanks on other state agencies, and I think for your region, you would give me direction on who would be in these other categories. And certainly, the names, I need names put in these categories, is... I don't need that today, but I need you all to think about that. And with Nathan's help, he's giving me administrative support, fill in the blanks with the names, and perhaps some of these other organizations or representatives. In for the Mora San Miguel Guadalupe area, they just decided that they would have Highlands send a representative, so I put UNM for yours, as you noticed. And then they are going to ask the New Mexico Forest Watershed Restoration Institute to send a representative, which is another educational component. They are an institute at Highlands, so they've got... They took that other, other category a little further than most. So this is the template to work from.
Any further questions, Counsel? Mr. Bellis, if we can get this out, so we can get people named to this, and...
Absolutely, Mayor.
So if you... Mr. Mayor, if I could, if you didn't get the handbook, I do have extras, and I'm happy to leave all of them for other folks in the audience. Did you get the handbook?
I didn't receive it.
You did. So if I could, I'll pass them from Counselor Cantu down, or whatever's left. We will leave it for community members.
And for the community, if there are not enough copies, we will post it on the website.
Fantastic. And let me leave you with, and I paper clipped these so you could copy them, your old public involvement, public participation plan, which I thought was one of the better ones, because I wrote it.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to give kudos to Nathan Sanchez, who, long before I arrived and subsequent to my departure of the county, had gotten together in a very contentious process all of the Asekias, the ditches, myerdomos, farmers, just about everybody, mutual domestics, and actually got them to build consensus.
Anything else? Rosemary, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, really appreciate the time. I think this is... I think this is going to be a great effort and will lead to funding of projects. Collaboration is always a difficult thing, but I think Taos is primed to bring the other municipalities together, and as noted by Rick earlier, you are much further ahead than others. H1 is a little bit different, and I'm going to continue to work with the other regions. My preference is to work with Taos. I'm going to work with Mora San Miguel Guadalupe, and then the ISC would like to give me a couple of other regional water plans to work on, but certainly cognizant of the amount of time it takes, I want to give it my best effort with this one. So I'm hoping that I'll be able to help the Taos region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know you have some guests with you, and if you will take them around and, you know, make sure that we can get a little GRT while... There's plenty of art to be bought and plenty of restaurants to visit, so.
Mr. Mayor, they have credit cards. They're good.
We'll take those too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you again, Rosemary. So next, we'll go on to citizens forums, citizens wishing to speak. They'll have their opportunity to do so for five minutes. No action will be taken. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address... Welcome. Thank you for being here. Just your name for the record, so.
Yes, sir. Don Peters with Not Forgotten Outreach. Honorable Mayor, council members, and Mr. Manager. Mr. Manager, thank you for pulling the planning zoning issue off the agenda, because it was by accident that I found out today. And that's kind of one of the reasons that I'm bringing, coming today is to talk about... I don't do steps. Sir, can I ask a favor? Can you hand me some of that? Four-six-one Caye Asequil is part of the zoning area that y'all are going to be deciding in the future. This piece of property, Not Forgotten Outreach is purchasing to utilize as a B and B for military families. It'll be a quiet, safe respite locations that military families will be able to come from around the United States to stay here in Taos for up to one week free. It will also be to utilize as a training facility for our Veterans Beginning Farmer and Ranchers Development Program, which Not Forgotten Outreach is awaiting approval for our USDA grant of two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars a year for three years. It'll provide training to veterans in farming and animal husbandry. On the piece of property, the intentions are to put a greenhouse, have farm animals, since this is a two-acre parcel, that the back one acre is put into land trust, and where we also have a field crops. We'll be able to consolidate our farming efforts that we have in town, utilizing TCDC's greenhouse, the farming that's going on over there at Sunset, and fifty-two other acres located throughout the county. This is something that while y'all are deciding the planning and zoning, please take that into consideration, that it is agricultural land, and that this is our intentions to use. On the back, you'll see that we have... November eleventh will be our Veterans Day Ceremony again at the Plaza, which the VFW is hosting the fiftieth year commemorative for Vietnam War. And then afterwards, we'll be hosting our picnic again at Baton Hall. Last year, we fed over seven-hundred-and-fifty individuals, and we're looking to outdo ourselves again this year. This year, our correction, in January two thousand and fifteen, we'll be hosting our second annual Taos Ski Valley Military Appreciation Weekend. Last year, we had over five-hundred-and-fifty participants. This year, we're shooting for twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred participants to come into the Taos. Angel Fire has been gracious enough, and they're offering the resort in February, so we'll be able to duplicate the same thing in Angel Fire. Everybody is welcome to the Veterans Day picnic, and it's already on the mayor's calendar. So as y'all are deciding and looking at that planning and zoning, please take into consideration the plans for that old B and B that's been sitting there for two years that hasn't been used.
What's the address of that?
Four-six-one Caye Asequil, and it's about the third paragraph, I think. And it sits right on the border of what has just been annexed. And I didn't see the notification that y'all were going to annex it, or it'd have been up here sooner.
Mr. Bellis?
Sir, is this the... The email address and phone number, is this the best way to reach you?
That it is, sir.
Okay, because there are some things I think we could probably work together on here.
Cool, cool. Love that. And thank you so much to the town of Taos for always supporting the veterans. We really do appreciate y'all taking that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Under citizens forum?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Honorable Mayor Barone.
Doug, if you use the mic and just...
First, give us your name and...
Douglas Bashtel, we're with the Casas del Rio subdivision in town. Honorable Mayor Barone, esteemed council members, Mr. Rick Bellis, town manager. We do not want to waste your time today on any lengthy presentations, since this is not the time and place for that. However, we feel compelled to let... that. However, we feel compelled to let you know where we stand as a neighborhood. We, the owners and residents in the Casas del Rio subdivision and neighborhood, wish to express our vehement opposition to any business operation or in our neighborhood, under any circumstances or conditions. We are 100% united in opposition. We respectfully await our participation in any due process in this situation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
I think you guys know why we're...
Yeah. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
May I, Mayor? I guess I'm on the other side.
Yeah.
Five minutes, right?
Well, yes. The only thing, we don't want to hear any facts or stuff like that, because I'll turn to Mr. Lopez. And just thinking out loud here, Mr. Lopez, there's a process, right? And if we hear any testimony, then if there is a appeal, then we wouldn't be able to hear it. So I just want to turn to Mr. Lopez to kind of set some of the ground rules. Is that correct?
I think the concern is, Mr. Mayor, is that there is an application process for home use, if that's my understanding, and, which can be administratively decided, but then there's a due process right, that it'd be taken before the planning director, and then to directly to the town council. And so you would sit as a judicial body hearing that appeal if that were the case. And so the concern is, is that we not have any testimony concerning the facts, because that is not properly before you at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to tell the association that we are not, we're portrayed as probably the enemy, and, but we are, once you realize what it's all about, the things that we do, this is my daughter, Amy, and she works with me. And we want to work with you people as much as we possibly can. I know that there's no, I guess the, we can't address each other by saying good morning any longer. I get, you know, results, blah, 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 and this and the other. And I get concerned, because we're all in the same, or in the same neighborhood, rather. And we want to work with you people as much as we possibly can. If there's a concern, please come over, visit with me. I'll go with your, to your houses, and so on, so forth. Any things that we are able to work hand in hand together? This is America. We work with each other. We don't work against each other. I wouldn't put my kids in a situation of such. Three grandkids that are going to be living there, and that place needs improving, improving. You've seen that, that it was... I have a stack of police reports that thick. I thought that was Mrs. Stoner, the person that sold the house. I was going to request for that plaque, but nonetheless, I want to make sure that you folks are, if we can engage in dialogue, I think we could probably resolve the situation. And if you have any questions for me, or, you know, we'll, we'll wait the other two minutes, I guess, Mr. Mayor. But the other thing is, just for the record, we are providers of the GRT. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wish to address the council at this time?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, town council. And...
Your name for the record, just...
My name's Diana Martinez. I'm a qualifying real estate broker here in Taos. And upon reviewing, you know, our nature in real estate is to do our due diligence to our buyers and sellers. That's what we do. That's what we do. And, but basically, you know, of course we're not, you know, going to state, put all the facts out there or anything. But really, what we want to do is clarify that my client, which is Elenio, has come into this neighborhood, and we want peace, and we want to be able to be open with each other. You know, us as well to know that, we know that our job is to, is to come, you know, and bring buyers and sellers together with a peace of mind, something that works with all parties. And our job is to do that. Our job is not to be fighting amongst each other. Yes, we know the rules. But what can we do to make everything for win-win situation for everybody? And I know that my client, Amy, she's got three children, and she would not put her family in jeopardy. And I think what's happening here is that this business, you know, the neighbors are assuming that's going to be, you know, something which is out of proportion. It's basically, he's just applying for a business license to run a business out of the house. And, you know, so all that is going to be done, is going to be done at the courthouse. Nothing is going to, there's not going to be no traffic being, you know, coming to the house, because of the fact that he's got, you know, I mean, legally, realistically, right, Amy, that by law, you cannot have any inmates out of the courthouse without not taking care of all the business out at the courthouse. So in this matter here, really, the business that's going to be run out of the house is going to be just bookkeeping, the business end event, and storing ankle bracelets, storing. But it's not going to have high traffic. It's, I think, I just want to clarify that with the neighbors. And I think, you know, we just need clarification there. And as, as adults and as human beings, we need to all work together and come to an agreement. So with that in mind, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council? If not, then we'll go ahead and move on to a public hearing. And, and the public hearing is ordinance, is a public hearing, but we're, and we'll take a motion on it. It's ordinance 1405, adoption of new zoning plan. And council, beginning of the meeting, we did have Mr. Bellis make a recommendation. So with that recommendation, what's the wishes? Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, what date was that, that you wanted to move it to, Mr. Bellis?
Madam clerk, what's the next regular date?
Mayor, council members, the next regular meeting is October 15th, or, I'm sorry, October 14th. But you do have a special meeting scheduled for October 7th at 1:00.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we table this issue to October 14th. Second.
Do we need a time specific also?
Yes.
1:00 P.M.?
I believe we have to state that it's 1:00 P.M.
1:00 P.M.
Okay, with my second.
So we have a motion for October 14th at 1:00 P.M. No further discussion? Call for the vote. No? Mr. Lopez?
I think the next meeting is 7:00.
Yeah, I don't, Mr. Mayor, the council is not present. I don't believe that it's a major issue. I think there are some technical issues that may make this entire process moot, and have been pointed out by a mayor proclam. Additionally, we have fully advertised and received no comment for or against. This was some change that was done at the behest of the property owners themselves, and we have spoken to at least two of them on the phone today. And, so I think it's a simple matter that will either be dropped at that time, or would be recommended for approval, as is.
Okay. So we do have a date, and we feel we can take care of it without the council present. So with that said, is that motion still stands? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Palata?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, we vote matters from staff, 911 communication center update, and we'll turn to Amity, council. As, as we move on in time, we'll see more and more of our staff coming to us with presentations. I think it's important that we be kept up to date of what's going on in the different departments. So, Amity, thank you for being here. Thank you for taking on the challenge.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, town council members. It's good to see you.
Might have to pull that mic closer. It's...
Can you hear me better now? Closer yet. All right, how about that?
That works good.
Okay. So it's been a while since I've talked with some of you, but just so you know, we currently have eight full-time dispatchers working at the center. We're running a 12-hour shift to accommodate that short staffing. That shift matches Taos PD, so it's two on two off, three on three off, so every other weekend, just like the officers. We have night shift and day shift, both. This equates to about two dispatchers per shift. The APCO standard, the national standard, I use their staffing rubric, and it actually recommends 3.1 dispatchers per shift, based on our call volume, ring allowance, PTO time, things like that. I want you to know that the HR department, with the town and the county, have done an excellent job of working together to promote the job opportunities that we have in dispatch, especially with the fiscal agency change that we're going to experience at the end of the year. So that's actually gone really well. We have an open announcement right now, and it runs out September 30th. So if you know any eager, fast minds, send them my way, please. The call volume that we're experiencing is about 57,800. That's total calls. So your emergency calls are at 9,020. Your non-emergency calls are 48,700. So we're pretty busy for two people a shift. We are well on...
Is that call volume per year, or is that to date fiscal year?
To date.
Is that fiscal year, or is that calendar?
No, that's the calendar year.
Okay. Thank you.
Today, we have a three-second wait time, which is seven seconds under the national standard, which is awesome. Unfortunately, we have about 82.6 abandoned calls per month. So that's calls that didn't ring through to the center, because either we were experiencing high call volume, or they lost patience with the, with the time. So it's not unreasonable. But when we bring on more staff, we're hoping that we'll lower even further. We just experienced our NCIC audit. There were six findings. Nothing very serious that's going to impact daily service, but stuff that we, that they give us a list that we can work on. Also, there are several training opportunities in our future, which I'm really excited about. Your dispatch center, our dispatch center, has really lacked training in the past. So giving these guys the opportunity to go to trainings and attend classes and mix and mingle with their counterparts in other counties is a really great opportunity. It really encourages them, which they really definitely need it. We're looking at a virtual training academy for continuing education in emergency communications. We're dealing, we have a class dealing with domestic violence, an NCIC full access training, and background investigations for employment checks. Now, we're doing the background investigation class specifically to address the needs of the county adult detention center and juvenile detention center. They, they run a lot of background checks. And so when we move over to the county, we'll be able to pick that up for them. And it'll be a real cooperative spirit. So we're looking forward to that. The construction update for the new center. We are well past the wiring. We're into the hardware, software, and furniture installation coming up in October. We should sign off on that in October and start facilitating the training on the radio system in November. The second and third week of November, there is an opportunity, if the council would like to have an open house for the user agencies as well as the public. I, I've heard from several members of the community that stopped me in the grocery store and parking lots and whatnot, that they would like to see what goes on. And that would be an excellent opportunity, because it's not live at that point, but everything will be in. So they can really take a look, and the service won't be interrupted at all. So if you guys could just think on that for a little while, and maybe get back to me, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, Amity, real quick, with that note, what steps are being taken in the new facility with regards to securing the facility? Badge in, badge out, what are...
Yes. The main entrance is the, the same entrance as the ADC, and then you have the elevator. And then once you get to the second floor, it's a secured entry door that's monitored by video. And you can only get in if somebody physically lets you in or hits the buzzer, but they can't really do that unless they look at the camera.
So I guess my question is, Amity, with, you guys are the only ones that will be occupying the second floor, correct?
We're currently sharing it with the county fire chief.
But it would be those two agencies only?
Right.
So would it make more sense to make the secure access point the elevator? On the way, but that's my concern. And when you look at call centers, data centers, all that stuff, it's secure access point is really the...
Right.
You also have a stairway, stairwell, correct?
There is a stairwell, yes. From my understanding, when I've been over there several times, they can lock it so you can't go up, but you can use the door to come down.
Emergency exit.
Right.
But if the elevator wasn't working, wouldn't you need to have access to the stairway to get up to work?
There are actually two stairways. There's one in the Sallyport, and then there's the stairway. And I suppose if the elevator weren't working, we could work it out where we would have a key. It's an actual old-fashioned key lock. So we could gain access, should we need to.
Wouldn't it be simpler, though, if you just used a badge swipe to get into the elevator or to the stairways access?
Yes, as long as you have your badge with you. It would, it wouldn't be terribly difficult.
What I'm trying to say is, if you have two or three people working up there, and somebody else needs to come in to change shifts, and the only way to get through is through the stairway, that person has to leave their post and come all the way down and let you in. That's not good security, nor is it a good way to, to operate, because you could have a call halfway down the staircase, and you got an issue. So I'm just trying to say is that it should be set up so that your people can access themselves using a secure, either touchpad or a, or a swipe card to get them in there. And I'm just saying that, you know, to me, that would be the best way to do it, rather than depending them on somebody else to let you in.
Okay.
And I'm just looking at it from the standpoint that, that we are so, you're not going to be overwhelmed with staff. So, as much as we'd love to have that, you're not going to be. So I'm just saying is that I think it would just be much better and more operational security if it was done that way.
Okay. Well, I can certainly take that to, to the construction manager. I know we are on target with the budget. So I will bring it up with him next Monday at the meeting.
Let me ask this question, then. Mr. Court, do you, is there other areas in the courthouse that have swipe card or keypad access security areas? So it's not something that's unusual that could be set up in there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Palata, as it stands now, the only entry into and out of the courthouse, you said, is, it's, it's wide open right now. So when you walk into the courthouse, it's controlled by the Taos County deputies, and the sheriff's office really controls the egress and ingress into the building. However, there are some entries through the backside, which are available to the judges, so they can come in. And they actually have to use a proximity card to get in also. But to help Amity out, also to answer some of the questions regarding entry into the dispatch facility, the way it was designed was to have a proxy card entry into the main part. The elevator and the stairs were never factored in, because it wasn't really budgeted at the time. But there is no real way to get in, other than through the front door and the back door, which is really meant for egress, in case of a fire. But it's not really to come in. It's made just for egress as an alternate path to get out in case of an emergency. But to get in, you would have to go in through the front door, which requires either a buzzer or a proximity card. At this point, the way it's being designed is there is actually two separate rooms. One is for dispatch, and one is for an additional tenant, which the county is working to get the Forest Service. And if the Forest Service comes in, the way it is going to be designed is there will be an additional entryway for the Forest Service to go through. be an additional entryway for the forest service to go through also, and they will have their own proxy card also. So there would be no way, the way that it's going to be designed for the forest service to gain entry into the dispatch center.
But there is a proximity card that's set up at the front entrance to get in?
Yes.
And since the only tenants in that area would be 911 and Fire Chan?
That is correct.
Okay, so you've answered my question. Thank you.
Anything else, Amity?
To move on to the employee transfer, uh, you guys signed the JPA, and it's been signed all the way around. That's great news. Um, we're going to start the process, the job application process, to transfer to the county. We're going to start that in October. Um, just so you know, due to the difference in the benefit structure between the town and the county, at the current wage that they're making, which was signed into the JPA, they're going to take home slightly less than they make now.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman, you close?
This was part of the issue that we had. I mean, this, this goes back now a couple of years with regards to the disparity in wage. Um, and my concern is, is again, to get it, I mean, having all this equipment is one thing. I mean, and all the capabilities is great, but not having the proper personnel to work it still concerns me. Um, Mr. Mayor, it was something that we had asked of the county a while back to consider increasing that lineup, and especially when it comes to employee retention, um, because to get them trained and watch them go away, especially with communities as close to us as Espanola and Los Alamos, does not make any sense. Not to spend 1.5, 1.7, whatever final toll tell he's going to be, on this dispatch center to not have anybody to staff it. Um, and on top of that, provide a level of service less than what we're receiving now just doesn't make any sense to me, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I would ask that, uh, Mr. Manager, if you could get with Mr. Archuleta, or at least allow the two governing bodies to sit across the room for one another to have this candid discussion, um, because again, my, my concern is not having it adequately. I mean, this is public health, safety, and welfare. It's not, you know, a call center for your cellphone. It's, it's what responds when your kid's hurt, when your mom's having a heart attack, and that, that does concern me. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I still think that staffing level is way, way inadequate.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilman, we have a meeting set up, the mayor and myself, uh, with the, uh, county manager coming up, I believe it's Wednesday?
Thursday, 11.
Thursday. Uh, and certainly 911 is one of those issues. There have been a number of good collaborations, such as that, um, so that employees aren't hesitant to apply for the openings, that they go through the dual process of the town and county right now, and therefore those employees that are hired are sure that they're going to be continued. But, yeah, there, there are some remaining issues, such as the compensation, such as the director's salary, that we still need to work out, including the final timing.
And really, the only reason I kind of bring that up, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Managers, because of the fact that sitting on the regional coalition board in Los Alamos, you sit with peers from those surrounding communities, Santa Fe, Espanola, Los Alamos, and each one of them say, "Train them, we'll take them." And that's not what I want to be known for.
And, and Amity, I'm just going to turn to you for a second, uh, and, and I think one of the presentations you did is, is you have a kind of a step program that you're developing, so once they become trained and certified, they actually may move up in the payroll, uh, system so that we can retain those. Is that, is that correct?
Supposing we have a budget.
Well-
Well, we, we are a bit tied into one place with our budget right now.
All right.
But we do have, we do have a pay scale somewhat dependent on their, their job responsibility. The problem is, is that we have a fairly young staff on the whole, and so they're at the beginning of their, their knowledge base, and it's hard to educate them quickly enough to make them, uh, equal in compensation with the other counties. We're working on it. We're getting there, and I'm, I'm trying really hard to offer training benefits and other things in addition to facilitate their staying. We're working with what we have. This year's going to be tight. It's just the way it is. We, we're doing a lot with a little bit, with a little bit.
Councilor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Councilman Gonzalez is, I'm going to build on what he's saying, is the problem is that, according to the JPA, there is no increase until 2017 fiscal year. So the next fiscal year, which is, is going to be 2016, uh, there's no increase in the budget. And so when you train these people, there's no pay scale to pay them. And this is what our concern is, is what he's saying, is that we train them and they buy them. So, um, that's the reason we need to do something about ensuring that there's an increase in that budget, but the way the JPA's set up, there isn't. And so we're trying to see what we can do to untie your hands to, to keep your staff.
As the JPA currently reads, the, the last one I read that was signed, it said that they're going over, we're going over to the county at the wages we currently make right now. So whatever we're making before we make the transfer is what they'll make at the county.
To give you an increase now?
Well, um, some of my staff, uh, due to the recent loss of some staff, one, one of our staff decided to move to Florida, um, another one retired. So with that, um, we were able to promote some people based on additional job responsibility. They're not quite on par with the surrounding agencies, but they're a lot closer than they were. So we're getting there, and you guys gave everybody a quarter. That helps. It's just, you know, we've got to, we've got to do what we can.
Councilor Gonzalez, Jim?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess, you know, for me, just looking at the whole overall JPA and the way it's structured, I mean, 2017's a long way away.
It is.
I mean, some of that-
And there's a lot of learning that's going to go on between now and-
Well, and my concern, Mr. Mayor, is as fast as technology's changing, that equipment could be out of date by 2017, which would mean we'd need an equip, equipment upgrade before we'd need, uh, a pay increase. So, I mean, I'm looking at this from several aspects and seeing how skewed it is. I mean, I, I really need to just stress the emphasis on this, Council, that we take all the appropriate actions to get work, because something happens, we're the guys that they're going to, that the loaded guns are going to be pointed at.
If I, I might suggest, uh, Councilman, um, Amity has moved ahead with the technical advisory board, and, uh, I think they've got some really talented, good people on there, folks that were involved in the gas outage. Our own chief is going to chair it. Uh, the Towsky Belli Public Safety Director is your vice chair?
Yes.
And secretary is?
EMS.
EMS Director?
County EMS is the-
Joaquin Gonzalez, who, uh, all three are, are very dedicated to seeing that full services are met. Um, I, I would urge, Amity, I would urge you, chief, as chair, knowing that somewhere shortly after October 10th, there'll be a joint meeting by the town and the county, and this will be an issue on the table, uh, for that group to meet and look at the, uh, wage parity issue and the concern that we can attract and retain staff, and that that group be prepared to come back with a recommendation at that joint meeting of the town and the county. And I think that would give a little more, uh, clout to the council's, um, position at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Anything else, Amity?
Sir, I think we're going to, uh, stop at that point. If you guys, if you guys have any other questions at any time about anything, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilors, Amity, you had mentioned an FTE shortage of 2.1 versus a 3.1 desired level. Is that right?
We currently operate at two per shift, and we are, uh, suggested to operate at 3.1, yes, with a, with a national rubric, staffing rubric.
Okay.
Formula.
And so I'm just going to presume that that correlates then with the dropped calls?
It, yes, sir, it does. A lot of times dropped calls are from a, a major incident, so if you have some, somebody that has a car crash right next to the plaza, and there are many, many witnesses-
Ah.
Everybody calls 911. And so the first, we have six incoming lines, trunk lines traditionally. So the first six light up, and you take all that information, and then there are 12 more people that are calling. Sometimes if they see other people on the phone, they'll just go ahead and hang up, because they'll say, "Oh, I'm on 911, I'm on 911."
Understood.
So on and so forth. So a lot of it has to do with that.
Is that disparity, the 2, 2.0 to 3.1, uh, can that be attributed to pay scales?
Uh, well, sir, it's... Mostly.
Okay.
Uh, you, you've got some other, you've got a few morale issues. Your se, the center was neglected for quite some time, and so, uh, luckily, we've got really young staff. They're, they're pretty positive. They're looking at this fiscal agency change as, uh, wave of the future, hurrah, you know, type of situation. So the, in that regards, it's really good.
And, Amity, not to belabor the issue and, and take more time, but could you list for us the findings of fact from your audit briefly?
Sure. Um, we had issues with, um, primarily with validations. We had some ORI issues.
Validation?
Yeah. NCIC is, uh, a database, so you put in information from the courts. So you have missing person information, wanted person information, sex offender, sex offender information, and, um, protection order information. Those come out typically like a warrant. I don't know if you get, you probably have never, I don't know if you've seen one or not, uh, but you enter that information into the database, and then a second person checks it. It's called the second check, self-explanatory. That's just to make sure that all the information is correct, because you don't, for any reason, want to be entering the wrong person. It ends in disastrous consequences.
Right.
And then finally, uh, specifically in, uh, missing persons, missing persons, wanted persons and such, you do a validation. And a validation is where you confirm that that is still active paperwork, and you'll do that one 18 months, two years later. Um, and that's just to confirm that everything is going forward the way it's supposed to, and that anything that needs to be cleared out of the system is cleared out of the system accordingly. It also, uh, works for articles that have been so and so, guns, boats, license plates, anything that's registered. We also check on that as well. The system, to this point, hadn't been very well addressed. We had, uh, we had a three-part warrant system for some reason. I'm not quite sure why. So we're working on consolidating that down to one, and with that comes, um, a bigger emphasis on making sure the validations are complete. So, uh, we are already addressing that issue, but they did let us know that we need to stay on that track. One of the things that you enter information under is an ORI number. It's a originating request identifier. So whether you do business for Taos PD, the Sheriff's Department, Cuesta, the Ski Valley, or the court, or ADC, JDC, each one of those has their own number. So if they make the request, you use their number, and it identifies for the people at DPS, Department of Public Safety, who is asking that for that information, where that information is going. They track all of this, and they're very, very serious about it. Consequently, I am very, very serious about it. So, um, there are ORI numbers that they have been phasing out through DPS, um, and apparently our, our staff was not aware of that change. And the reason they weren't aware of that is because they weren't printing out their teletypes, which was the other finding that they asked us to do. So, uh, they send out messages through the NCIC system, and usually, most agencies print those out, everybody signs off on it, so you've all acknowledged that you've read it, and then you file it just in case you need it for later. Well, we weren't printing those out. We are now, but we hadn't been up till March-ish. So, um, now, having done that, uh, really, when, when our auditor got here, I asked her to, um, give me the information with the fine tooth, I mean, I was like nitpicket to death. I want to know every single thing that we need to address, so going forward, we have a very strong foundation to work from. And that's basically what she did. So, uh, they have seen a, a wealth of improvement in the last six months. Uh, they're really, really pleased with what we've been able to do so far, and so, uh, we should have an excellent audit. They run on a three-year cycle, so we should see her in a couple more years.
Thank you, Amity. Is it customary for an E911, uh, operation to be doing background checks and NCIC and that kind of thing?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
That's the standard?
Yes.
And, um, I'm going to guess, just HIPAA requirements, so you're doing background checks on town employees and prospective hires? Is that-
No, sir.
Do I hear that? It's just through the court system and, and-
There, there are... NCIC, um, background check is, you're strictly searching for criminal history-
Right, and that is-
And you do that on every single contact that a police officer or a sheriff's deputy would make.
And those are arrests.
So anytime they do a traffic stop, or anytime they contact somebody on a call, they'll give you the information and you run it, just in case.
Gotcha.
So if they contact somebody that has a warrant or has warnings of any kind, they know that.
Right.
Background checks for employment, the, the training that I mentioned-
Yes.
-is different. Somebody from our HR office here in town is also going to that training, and that is strictly pre-employment background check, which is not a triple I from NCIC.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that E911 is not carrying more than it's supposed to.
Sir, we are not doing mission creep. We are paring this down just as fast as we can.
Um, yeah, and it just, yeah, okay, and I think you've answered all of my questions, Amity. You've been very generous, um, FTEs, findings, and drop calls. And HIPAA requirements are all adhered to, I'm sure. And when you do an NCIC just for public awareness, this, these are only on, uh, court adjudicated convictions, uh, not warrants?
Um, sir, I'm not sure I understand your question.
What I mean is, uh, once you've been committed, uh, once you've committed a crime and a, and a court has adjudicated on that issue, then you're into the NCIC system. You're not, uh, just for, um, suspicion. Chief, do you know what I'm saying?
You, um, everybody's in the system. Uh, um, if you've dealt with the court and you have a warrant-
Mm-hmm.
-that'll be entered on, in your file.
Okay.
But every, a six-month-old baby could have an NCIC record. It just requires a social number, really.
Right.
Yeah.
And also, if a person's placed under arrest and they're fingerprinted-
Yes.
-um, many jurisdictions will enter that into the NCIC, and it'll become what's called a triple I, which is an interstate identification index. So that's a, that's a criminal history on somebody. So that will show the arrest, doesn't necessarily show the outcome of it. Quite frankly, many times, it doesn't show the outcome. So many times, if we're working a case and we believe a person has a prior conviction, for instance, a DWI, it'll show the DWI arrest. Many times, we have to contact the jurisdiction to actually pull the court records to see what happened with the case.
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thanks, Amity.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Councilor, uh, Councilor Gonzalez, and we'll go to Councilor country-
Sorry, Amity.
That's okay.
You can tell this is my thorn in the side. Um, I guess what I would like, um, sometime in the near future, is a, uh, technicality update, I think, because I got some issues. Um, and the issues I have, maybe Conrad, you can address these, uh, for me as well, lies within redundancy. Um, and power redundancy, telecom redundancy, do they exist? Um, and if they do not, what happens in the event that something's cut to the 911 services?
Just to confirm, you said power redundancy and telecom?
Power redundancy and telecom redundancy.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Gonzalez, to address the power redundancy portion, everything is powered through a battery system, so in the event that power is dropped or something happens to power, it'll run off batteries, but-
For how long?
In addition to that, before I answer that, in addition to that- In addition to that, before I answer that, in addition to that, there are generators at the county. And the generators were intentionally put in for the detention center. Actually, there are two large generators, one for the detention center and one for the rest of the facility out there. The detention center will also supply... That generator will also supply the dispatch center. So that when power is immediately interrupted, it takes about ten to fifteen seconds for the generators to kick on. So the batteries are only there to really keep you running in that short period of time. But the actual runtime of the batteries is somewhere about, you know...
So I guess my problem is, is that being a dispatch center, I mean, our kind of lifeline to this community, is that in the event, and God forbid it ever happens, but I mean, we didn't expect a water outage for a day and a half either. What happens? I mean, just somebody hits your transformer box out on Albright and shoots power. Are you going to run dispatch for ten days on generators?
That's where... Actually, you will.
Actually, yes.
And the generators are intended to run... I believe there's a three-day runtime on the generators at 50% capacity.
But wouldn't a redundant path make more sense, is what I'm saying?
It would. And somebody's going to have to actually figure out where the funding for that will come from. That's why there are actually generators there to support the redundant path or the loss of a redundant path.
There is... Just so you're aware, when DFA purchases your telephony equipment, they also purchase you UPS, which is an uninterrupted power supply. It's the battery that Conrad's referring to. And that's standard. And that will kick on and keep your operations. It's your necessary functions, right? It's not going to keep your bathroom light operating. But you're going to have all your terminals, your NCIC connections, all of that. I do agree that we do need to be working on a backup system. But as we're here and we can rotate through the equipment, your 911 equipment is on a five-year rotational plan in the state of New Mexico. So we're one year into that. We're almost two years into that. So in three years, we're going to get brand-new telephony equipment. And when that happens, the recommendation from myself would be to set up your backup center in an alternate location and start working that way. So you have that plan. You just... You can't... Given the resources we have to work with, we have to have just a little bit of patience and a lot of creativity. We're going to get there. We just have to long-range plan it.
That scares the hell out of me. Creativity in a dispatch center. But, you know, for me, I guess it is just what kind of... I mean, what happens to warranty-wise on our telephony tube if we're running off generator? You know, I guess that's some of my concerns is power phase. Is there enough to supply? I mean, and now, we're not just talking dispatch. Now, we're talking the jail, county facilities, for example, if need be.
Right. And actually, I was speaking with the facilities director at the meeting on Monday, and we are going out to look at the generator system. And we're going to assure that it can accommodate the load should we require it. And I do believe that's set up for next Monday, but I would be happy to give you that report when I'm finished.
Mr. Mayor, if we could get that just technical team to present to the council so that, you know, for me, just as one counselor, want to feel safe with the direction that we're moving in, just before we go live, we address some of these issues before they bite us.
Okay.
Okay. And then telephone redundancy.
So regarding the telephone, actually, there is two redundant paths coming in.
And you're sure?
I am sure of that. However, they...
It's a looped line, right?
I'm not sure what you mean by looped line.
Well, so they may be coming in from two different points, but they're still connected at the same head.
Right.
So what happens if that head gets cut? SOL?
You're... I mean, there's only so much redundancy you can put into a 911 center.
Sir, if the connection goes, it's like 50 feet from my desk, so we have bigger problems at hand. Just saying.
Okay. So just technical updates?
But also, so that you know, there is also a microwave link that connects us back into the quest facility back in Albuquerque. So that if the actual physical lines do break, that microwave link is only available for...
Wireless.
Right. It's wireless. It's only available for emergency communications. The public can't use it. So if you picked up your home phone and wanted to call your grandma in New York, it wouldn't work.
It's not going to work.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bellis, and we still have Judy F.
I just wanted to address some of the councilors' questions. Actually, my recollection, when I was the emergency management coordinator for the county, was that the link in Albuquerque from the state failed more often than our local link failed, which was a bit ironic on the redundancy. But I do know there was discussion with the county and Kid Carson Electric and Mr. Reyes and his engineers that there was an attempt to switch out the meters, the way it's currently metered at the county complex, and that that was held in abeyance till some lines were going to be transferred when the final improvements at the Paseo and Albright intersection were made. And there was discussion that, at that time, it would be investigated as to if more than one feed could be brought in specifically in as regard to the jail. And Conrad, I believe at one point, we had looked at the idea that we could have run the telephone off the internet if necessary. Is that correct?
Yes, you can, but it's actually not designed into the way it is right now. And the county's internet service runs through Tausnet, which actually has a redundant feed back into Colorado through a wireless link. And they're the only ISP internet provider within Taus County that actually has an alternate pathway. If you were to get in any of the other providers within the county, they wouldn't have that redundant pathway.
But at some point, we could run it also through the fiber optic.
That is...
Tertiary, this is a three-level system.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Cantu?
Yeah, I was just wondering how the training for the new employees, because you sound like you're really shorthanded there and with too experienced gone, how you're handling the training? Because it sounds like if it's three on, three off, or two on, two off, are they getting the appropriate training? Or are you also in on the training as additional?
Well, I provide them an overview, especially on the Town of Taos personnel policy, the standard operating procedures for the dispatch center. And then we have both of our supervisors doing training. So we have one supervisor that focuses primarily on radio and daytime shift work, and then one supervisor that focuses on nighttime shift work, which is paperwork, typically speaking. And so they go through a training program that covers all of those aspects, and they sign off on everything, and the supervisor signs off on everything. And then at the end, we make sure that they are competent to do those tasks to which they've signed off, and the supervisor does that.
So are they also getting, like, on-the-job training? Because it sounds like...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
You can't really learn this by the book.
Answering...
You have to know how to answer the radio by answering the radio. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor, anything else?
Thank you, Amity.
You're so welcome.
Amity, thank you.
Thank you.
I, you know, I think it was important that the council heard from you. And, you know, I know there were some situations I've talked to you about, and, you know, and again, you know, that's the way we might get resolutions to some of them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Amity.
Council, kind of a request, that we could move up 12B. We could move that up.
Mayor, I make a motion that we move 12B up and make it the next order of business.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second to that?
Second, ma'am.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
So we'll go under Town Manager's Report to update on the septic receiving station. Mr. Rick, I know we have staff.
Yeah, I'd like our representative from CHTM Hill operates our plant to come forward. This is a report that he's doing at our request. Councilman Hahn and the mayor will remember that we met with a number of representatives of the septic callers about various concerns on one side and another. And our direction to our consultant was that we want an examination of our current practices versus best practices anywhere we might have vulnerability, but at the same time, how we could maintain the security of the system and allow for more flexibility in the hours for the septic callers to access the system.
And I believe Counselor Cantu was at one of the meetings also. Go ahead.
Well, per Mr. Bellis's request and your guys back in... What was this, August already? Canyon of August, we had that council meeting. So I'm updating you of what I've been able to find from facilities that OMI currently facilitates, as well as the other towns in New Mexico. So the purpose of this is to see exactly how... Why the septic receiving station is available for the Town of Taos and actually the Town County, Taos County. We're here to provide a septic receiving station for all domestic and small commercial entities. And what we're looking at is just making sure that we have a very sound and efficient unit for them. The other reasons that we're here is to discuss the policies of receiving septic station. And of course, the hours of operation accessibility. So to go onto this, is we have the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit and New Mexico Environment Department permit. So as I discussed with Councilman Hahn when he went and visited the plant, these are our plant's bibles. Everything that we have to do that comes in and goes out has to revolve around these two permits. So in dealing with that, I'm trying to... I was trying to research what we were able to find with NMD and the EPA permits. There is no guidance or regulation of anything dealing with septic haulers. The way they view septic stations at a facility is it's there to support the residents of a certain area to... For proper disposal of their septic waste. The reason that they use the wastewater plant is because it's convenient for septic haulers to dump. And it's the most efficient way for it to be processed properly after the septic tank has been properly managed. And one of the recommendations from EPA and the Environment Department is that you have to pump a septic station... A septic system at least twice every two years. And that is to make sure that there's no solids buildup in there, and so you don't have a possibility for groundwater contamination. So they recommend that you pump it out. But there's no guidance for where it goes after that. You know, that's the interesting of what I've been able to find. There's no guidance. And if all the facilities that our company manages, there's 50% of us that don't accept it, like Rio Rancho, they don't accept it. But Farmington and then ourselves here in New Mexico are the only ones that do accept septic waste. So it's kind of hard to really get a really good realm of where everybody's at because there's no specific guidance from NMD or EPA how to deal with this. And within the... You'll find this in every ordinance of acceptable waste. Domestic waste from residential, commercial, septic tanks are permitted for dumping at the designated receiving station. It's in our ordinance. It's in everybody else's ordinance of what is supposed to be recommended to come out of there. So our ordinance is consistent with everybody else's. The non-acceptable waste, any liquid or vapor having a temperature exceeding 150 degrees, any waste containing 50 parts per million in weight of fats, oils, and grease, any waste containing pH lower than 5.5 or higher than nine and having corrosive properties. I can go on. But every ordinance that I was able to find online that people have sent me, they all have this. There is a guidance manual from EPA. It's really outdated, but it stated the same amount, that this is what you're supposed to do. And the interesting thing about our ordinance is it's right in line with what our community needs. So all we're doing is providing a place for safe disposal of somebody's septic system where they're trying to properly maintain their system. Now, if there is an emergency where a system fails, they are supposed to notify the Environment Department, the property owners. They're supposed to notify the NMD, because they're the one that actually have a discharge permit from New Mexico Environment Department. And locally here, we have it at the Taos field office. So if they have a problem with their system failing, if they need to amend it, you know, fix their own system, it's up to the property owners to do that. All these gentlemen are doing are providing a service to help them remedy their facility. I believe that Mr. Fernandez of Roadrunner Septic is the only provider that is able to inspect and test, you know, septic receiving station. The little gentlemen are pure septic pumpers. So the regulations with them is really limited in terms of what NMD and the state of New Mexico have provided for us. So the reason we're needing to make sure that we do monitor the septic system is because of the loading of the plant. Mr. Fernandez does have a wastewater certification for the state of New Mexico, plus his septic hauler permit as well. So he is one of the main proponents in terms of wanting to see if we can get increased dumping times. One of the things that we're looking at on this slide is the solid, toll-suspended solids and bio-oxygen demand at the plant. What we're talking about is the loading of the plant, either by solids or biological material. And right now, based off of just the waste that we're receiving from the septic haulers through monitoring of them, they constitute roughly about a quarter of our sludge that is being sent out to the landfill. So we are pulling out quite a bit of... And that's an average amount of solids that we're pulling out of the plant that the septic haulers are actually bringing in. So that's one of the reasons that we need to make sure that we continue to monitor the septic haulers coming in. And we also try to make sure that we're in good relationships with all the septic haulers of making sure that we limit how much loading that we have. And I'll get back to this on that point further on into the presentation. But the best management system of what I've been able to find is, and this is basically an average of everybody, hours of operations, eight to five, Monday through Friday, usually only on Saturdays, eight through 2:00 p.m. Sundays and holidays are usually closed. And based... And since the plant is the main source of operations, they usually have an individual that is trained by the industrial pretreatment program, and they actually have an ordinance set up and approved by actually EPA to deal with septic waste and any significant industrial user that might be happening. So if you look at the program just based off of that, you know, it would look like that's what would be needed for Town of Taos. At this time, with us being in such a cold environment, I'd like you to just make sure that you just keep this as a what's the best practice of what's going on in other facilities. It's not necessarily what the Town of Taos is recommending as an operator. So that's just my observations of what's going on. Access to a facility, it's usually fenced, and there's usually one employee monitoring it. The security, it's usually... Majority of the time, the facility is usually locked up at the end of the... the end of the day. And testing, everybody does have pH testing. And as you can see, right around 50% of the time of all the facilities, some do it every single load, some don't do it at all. A visual inspection of what's being dumped. And then there's a chemical oxygen demand. They do that on a very random basis. And then fats, oils, and grease, that's a random place. The fats, oils, and grease are important tests to understand, you know, that we could take every once in a while because everybody has grease. And what that does is it promotes a habitat for certain bacteria, filamentous bacteria. And what happens is, especially in the older system, think of a tumbleweed, that's what it kind of does with the population of the bugs. It doesn't let it sit, allow it to settle right, and it does affect the process. So, that's one of the reasons why fats, oils, and grease are in there. So, our current situation with staff availability. At this time, there are six full-time employees, including myself, at the wastewater plant. We have a, on a monthly basis, we have a stack like this of preventative work orders that we must complete, and that's based off of our contract. And, and of course, we're having to deal with corrective measures that pop up periodically and sometimes almost on a daily basis, so we actually have to get those corrected as soon as possible. The loading of the plant with BOD and TSS, like I mentioned before, we need to make sure that we continue to monitor the septic that's coming in because we're dealing with population of microorganisms that we have to maintain to properly treat the septic water and the sanitary sewer that's coming into town. And also the TSS, that is total, that's organic and inorganic solids are actually coming down through the, down to the plant. So, we actually have to maintain a healthy inventory of bugs to maintain a healthy, in a sense, a buffet for the bugs, so they're happy.
[laughter]
That's what it is, layman's terms. So, so that's what we're looking at. Hours of operation, right now, they're set at eight to four, Monday through Friday, and eight till noon on Saturday and Sunday. And in the resolution, it was the states that were closed in holiday, all city recognized holidays. In reality, based off of our contract, we're only properly able to give you guys Monday through Friday. It's a bonus to the town that our contract is able to have a little flexibility in terms of, we manage the facility to the best of our ability. And on the weekends, we actually have to waste out the inventory to keep it at that healthy size of bugs that would make the plant run properly. So, we actually have an operator that's on call, that goes in on the weekends and does the wasting. Fortunately, we always have to waste, but unlike this last two weekends, we didn't have to waste. So, it is a benefit for the town at this time, if we have to go in on a day that we don't have to waste, to open the gates and monitor, you know, the system to a certain extent. So we do do that with that kind of information going forward, that it's not in our contract to go past Monday through Friday in terms of manually observing the plant. And like I said before, a lot of these facilities that we have out there have an industrial pretreatment program, the IPP. And a lot of that's found in our documents with our permit. But, you know, it says contributing industries and pretreatment requirements. The following fluids may not be introduced into the treatment facility. But it doesn't tell you how to regulate it, it doesn't tell us how to manage it. It just says, if you see this, you make sure it comes about. So right now, based off of my conversations, based off of my field experience and visiting with all the septic haulers when I have a chance to be up there, and I do a visual inspection in a sense, because I can kind of see it in the influent channel, but I don't, I can't see it only. It's an after, it's when it's actually mixed after. So, I can't have a visual inspection of the influent stream from the septic haulers because there's no way for it, because it's not designed properly to do that. And like I mentioned before, NMD and EPA, there's no regulations, no guidance, and there's, you have to go through a process to get an IPP program established. So you have to do several months and years of testing to make sure that there's any kind of significant industrial users that might be polluting the system. And as you see, the septic haulers are a significant user, but at the same time, all they're doing is providing a service for the community and protecting the water source in terms of keeping nitrates out of the system. So, as I mentioned, there's no regulations from NMD or EPA. So, the point of contention between one septic hauler and a handful of other septic haulers is accessibility to the wastewater facility. With us having a card swipe, having camera system, and it gets the whole facility right there at, around the headwork station, and if you guys would approve, we're looking around $17,000 to make automatic gates, along with the pH and the conductivity meters, I feel that the system would be properly protected in terms of what normally comes in. Based off of the state ordinance and based off of what everybody has signed off of in terms of pumping certificates and permits through the town, you know, the, this is the state ordinance, and it says standard septic. Disposal of septic shall occur only at permitted facility with a knowledge and consent of its facility owner, and shall not cause hazard to public health nor degrade a body of water. Transport and disposal of septic shall be in conformance of applicable federal, state, local regulations. Septic pumpers shall keep customer invoices and disposal records for three years and shall upon written request by NMD make such records available to the department for inspection. So, based off of that, there's no, no regulation that's saying that we can't operate the system the way it was being operated before in terms of us monitoring the system, relying on automated meters to monitor the pH. And the connectivity there helps us have a feeling of if there's going to be anything kind of, in terms of a very, like a slug, so to speak, a very thick septic sludge, it would shut down the system. So, it wouldn't allow that kind of damage to affect the plant. So, as I was discussing this with Mr. Fernandez a while back, and in many conversations we had in our other previous meetings with all the septic haulers, one of the point of contentions from myself and Mr. Fernandez is, we'd like to make sure that the septic haulers are kind of spread out. Because what's going on is you have, you know, like on Saturdays, we open up at eight o'clock in the morning. There are times that I've been over there, there's already three trucks over there at eight o'clock in the morning. So, right away, at peak flow, we're already having a, we're at peak flow, so we're having a lot of flow coming into the plant, so we're already hydraulically loaded to a certain extent. And then we're adding more biological degree in there and solids in there. So, by us being able to spread it out, like on the weekends, if we're able to continue monitoring it and operating on an automatic basis, it'd be more beneficial for the plant to continue doing that. So, on this next slide, I just want to show you, we have the membranes to my left, those are the membranes that we're using to treat the facility. And we're pulling out everything, anything from .04 microns. So we're keeping a lot of solids out of the effluent waters. The one, the top one on the right is the, that's the West Eration Basin. And if you can kind of see in the back, there's two mixtures back there, but you can't really see anything back there because there's a layer of foam back there. And what that foam is there, that's just the grease that we're not able to get rid of because we don't have that capability. So we want to make sure that we continue monitoring everything there. And then that bottom picture, that's the belt press. So that's where all the solids get removed. And subsequently, we actually have to haul those to Rio Rancho, so, and that's about a $30 per ton charge. And we're sending, you know, we're sending quite a bit out. So, so we're trying to protect the system in terms of trying to keep loading, kind of spread out. And so, that's where we're going with that. In closing, I just want to, my own personal opinion, it's not necessarily one that the company or, you know, that we're mandated to say, but I would prefer that we have a automated system. We have the pH and conductivity meters at the plant, which would shut down the system. The other part about it is, there's no regulations about this. You know, we'd actually have to do a very in-depth research that would take, you know, one to two years to develop, get it passed by EPA. And sharing an office with a gentleman that was doing it in Rio Rancho is a very time-consuming process, which we should be looking into in terms of help managing the facilities, because we're talking about fats, oils, and grease. We have a grease trap program here in town. So, I'd like to see if we can improve that. And so, the recommendation from myself, in its own personal opinion, is we try to keep it the way it was previously where they had a little bit of flexibility, because with the freezing temperatures, we have the monitoring available for us to do this. Based off of what I've found, it's reasonable, because we have a project in Traverse City, Michigan. There's one gentleman that, and it's dedicated for septic haulers. He runs it Monday through Friday, but they have availability to dump 24/7. We're not as cold as Michigan, but we get pretty darn cold. And if we're going to have some problems, you know, emergency situations, I would highly recommend that we, if we do that, we allow septic haulers to dump after hours, you know, after operating hours. And if they have a failed system, that they need to make sure that, we got to get some documentation from the septic haulers, that they, make sure that they get these things reported to the New Mexico Environment Department. Because if it's an emergency that they have to be pumped out, you know, that's where an industrial pretreatment program would really step into, to make sure that the water, surface waters are being protected. So that's where the IPP program would come into effect. So, if you have any questions, myself or any of the septic haulers, I know Mr. Fernandez would like a moment to visit with you guys as well, so I'm open for questions.
Counsel, any questions? Anthony, I just want to thank you. As ironic as it may seem, that plant is a work of art, and I encourage everybody to go out there. That being said, what I hear you saying, so correct me if I'm wrong, is that you'd like to go back to the way it was with a 24/7 punch card, as it were, capability.
I would think so. Based off of the historical stuff that I've been able to get from Gerald S. Assad that monitors it, most of the, we only had like one or two, like a year, that would go past seven o'clock. But which would mean that there was, the septic pumpers were actually out there at that time. So, but if we have an automated gate, you know, it looked like it was going to be around 17,000. And what that would involve would be a punch card, so you'd have, you know when they would be going in. They also would have the safety loop, so that way the trucks wouldn't get trapped and they wouldn't damage the gate if it prematurely tried to close. That kind of technology, if you're going to try to damage the plant intentionally, I think that wouldn't be the proper place to try to, you know, harm our plant. And we're talking about septic systems, and on a personal note, I have a septic system. I'm going to have to be bumping mine out, you know, for my regular maintenance. My parents in Questa have a septic, they've actually had to do theirs. One was on necessity, one was, we need to do it because it's starting to act up, so it was preventative. You know, so all we're asking the septic haulers to make sure, if we give them this flexibility to be able to come in, not to abuse it, one, and then also to make sure that if they can do it during working hours, that's ideal.
Thanks.
Albuquerque has the same system, although they have the operators there from seven to seven, they do have after-hours like in Albuquerque. And they get quite a bit more flow than we do, and although it is on an approval-type system, they do have pure access to go in 24/7.
Counsel, Gonzales.
Mr. Mayor, you know, and I think part of what you're talking about is the in and out with 24-hour access. There are, I mean, technology programs out there that would allow for a proximity reader, for example, that would track each and everybody's in and out, so they'd have to proxy in and proxy out. So that in the morning, you get a report as to who's been there, what time they were in, what time they were out. And each one would be unique to each different hauler. On the other note, French, with regards to the sludge that's coming out of there, have we discussed any more about taking that to our own landfill?
While French is walking up here, I'm assuming he's walking up, we do have, we are in the process of getting that sludge approved from the Mexico Environment Department to bring that sludge to the facility. French can bring you up to speed on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Gonzalez, yes.
Thank you, French. Nice and succinct.
How soon?
Councilmember Peralta, we actually had a meeting with the folks over at the Environment Department, and they were going to view the permit in the latter part of October and give us approval after that, or not. But chances are that the approval will come.
Depending on the election.
I wasn't going to dig that far into it, but you're right.
You were getting the sun shined right on you, French.
That's normally what happens.
Light attracts light.
Any other questions?
I'd like to hear from some of them.
I was going to, I was going to say, yeah, if you could, you mentioned Mr. Fernandez that would like to address us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Dennis Fernandez, I own Roadrunner Septic Service. I think I've met the majority of you guys. Just to kind of highlight a couple of things about what Anthony was talking about... Just to kind of highlight a couple of things about what Anthony was talking about, you know, the ability to dump twenty-four seven and provide a service to our community, I mean, really goes a long way, a long way for, one thing, providing the service, and another thing is for the facility. Dumping huge amounts of septic waste with, with zero oxygen in there is really detrimental to that plant. And I've been at the facility at eight in the morning and had, you know, several trucks lined up behind me. And it's, it's a relay race. We're there at eight o'clock and immediately we take off, we go get, you know, two or three more loads, stand in line again, and, and just really put a hurting on that plant, which is not healthy for it. And by expanding the time, it, it helps the plant recover after each one of the loads is dumped. Right now, there's no recovery period, it's just, you're just hitting it hard on Saturdays and Sundays. Now, during the week, it's not too, too bad. You know, it's still a relay race on the, during the week, but, you know, the, the plant can probably handle it on the eight to five basis. A couple of other things is that that facility has actually been in operation sometime around two thousand. It's had no permit violations, it's had no call-outs, it hasn't been a financial nightmare to, to the city in any way, shape, or form. I think just here, just a couple days ago, they had an issue with the computer, but it wasn't an issue with the performance of the facility and violating the permit, which is really good, which means that we're doing our job by, you know, making sure that we're not, you know, pumping stuff that's not, you know, in the best interest of the plant. We've all been through our certification process, which the state of New Mexico requires every septic hauler goes through. And when, when we go through that, it's just more teaching us, you know, what to look for. I mean, as an example, if you pop open a tank and you see that it's completely red inside, I mean, that tells us right there that, you know, there's some type of meth lab going on in there, and immediately we'll shut it and we'll kind of move on with life, report it to the authorities. And that, that's happened, it's happened to me once before, it's been a while. Not knowing what it was, I still kind of walked away and didn't pump it, I, I was just really surprised. As far as grease traps, none of us pump out grease traps at all whatsoever. Looking at the slide that Anthony had earlier, with my past experience at the wastewater plant, I was there almost twelve years, those aeration basins are always to the top with foam. And what the foam is, it's necardia. And that's just a by, a byproduct of the grease. The grease doesn't come always from the septic haulers, it's, it's from the residents. This is, this is the diet in northern New Mexico, everything we eat is deep-fried, and it's just the way it is. And I don't want to put the whole blame on, on the septic haulers for, for the grease that you see in there. And it's not, it's not fair to us to take that, to take that responsibility. I yet haven't toured the new plant with the membrane filters, I'd love to see it, I've talked to Anthony about taking a look, and I'd really like to see how it operates. But just from our conversations, you know, the plant is functioning fine with no problems or no issues. So that's why I would ask council to at least consider us going back to what we did originally, which was a twenty-four seven, seven days a week. It's for the betterment of the facility, it's for the betterment of our community. It, it's nice to provide that service to everybody. And of course, the service is just throughout the enchanted circle, that's really what it was meant to be and within, within the county. I don't think any of us out here go out to Santa Fe County and bring back waste over here, that's just not, doesn't make sense for us to go out there and do that. With the other measures that we have in place, number one, the gate, the, the gate is, you know, it's what it is. If we put a security gate and with a touchpad, I mean, that's fine, it tracks us going in. But not only do we have that, but we have a camera that's set on a motion sensor that'll start recording you when you get there, that's the second thing. The third thing is we have a swipe card. The valve will not open until the swipe card activates the valve. We do have conductivity meters and pH meters. We have everything in place, other than having somebody sitting there watching you dump and opening the valve for you. I mean, really, what else, what else can we do to protect that facility? And, and we just want to continue to doing the right thing. Back in October, when we approached council, you know, we agreed to pay more money per truckload in order to get the security gate and get the remote gate, in which that's what we're paying for right now, we're paying more. And what happened because of that, now, what, a couple months ago, our hours got changed. And of course, you guys did put it on the agenda, but we, we didn't see it, it was just one of the septic haulers that was out here. And I, I don't understand what his motive is for trying to limit our times, but, you know, we want to provide a, a service to our community, and we can't do it, you know, at such a limited time, be closed on holidays. I, I think the last time I checked, everybody uses the bathroom after five o'clock and on holidays and on weekends, that's the last time I checked. But, you know, again, you know, if we have a major, you know, emergency, just as an example, I don't want to bore you guys half to death, but like the Living Center, their pump station goes out every once in a while, they've got a six thousand gallon lift station that needs to be pumped out. And, you know, that thing goes out at midnight, one in the morning, we've got to serve the Living Center, this is what we have to do. And, you know, having the facility shut down, what do we do? Oh, let it run down the arroyo, let it run down the road, I mean, that is not what, what this is all about, it's, it's about providing a service to our community and protecting the environment. Let's see, what else do I have? That's about all I have, Mr. Mayor, council. And if you guys have any questions for me, I gladly try and answer them to the best of my ability.
Council Peralta?
Yes, I did have one question. If we didn't allow you to, to dump into our system, what's your alternative?
Well, we have City of Red River as an example. When I go to Red River and I, I service a tank there, I dump in Red River. When I go to Angel Fire, I dump there. If the facility was shut down, we wouldn't have a choice but then to go out and open up our own dump facilities out by the gorge. But what, that doesn't make any sense to do that next to the airport, you guys are expanding the airport, dump pits attract birds, birds and airplanes do not go hand-in-hand, so we really don't have too many choices, either dump it or travel out of town and go dump it.
Thank you.
I have a question for Anthony. I was just wondering, because you mentioned that you do random testing every now and then, and I was just wondering, for maybe the next ninety days, you could do random testing and just maybe report your findings back, just so that we know.
Well, I haven't, since the previous measure, pass of this, that we started saying that we would start sampling, I haven't done that yet. Probably, probably, probably the best thing to do is get a visual random on, on each one, as, as you recommend. And also what I could do, they'll have pH and visual, but the others test, I don't have any capability of doing the randoms, I'd have to send those out. So I can do the visual and pH samples for you, Councilman Peralta.
Because most of the septic haulers, they're, you know, they're, they're local people here, I just can't imagine that they'd be unprofessional, you know, but you never know, well, but just for our own knowledge, just to see what the random testing would show. You said you inadvertently had a load of, I guess, meth.
No, I didn't, I actually didn't pump it when I opened up the tank and I visually saw it. I, I, no, I, no, there's no way I would do that, I just, I just laughed.
Yeah, that really sounds scary, so.
Yeah, it is, it really is.
Just for the, for the knowledge of the council to know what.
Mr. Mayor.
What it reads.
Just, just to add on to Judy's sentiment, I think it's, it's good in that sense, that way we have a track record of what it was like before. We maybe go to a twenty-four hour and then what it looks like after. Just a good tracking mechanism.
Yeah, because we, we want a win-win situation for everybody, because it's a necessary service that's provided, you know, that, that we're all grateful for, and we want to see how we can work with you also.
Mr. Bellis, did you have any?
I just wanted to reaffirm what Councilman Gonzalez said, that my only hesitation here is that if we put in the gate, that we don't have multiple systems that have pass cards but don't integrate, that we work with our information technology director so that, for example, when the gate is triggered, whatever device, that goes to somewhere on the computer that's recorded with the matching video and the matching swipe card readings, so that we can get a comprehensive report.
So then, Mr. Bellis and Mr. Lopez, the way this was on the agenda was update on septic receiving station, and do we have, can we, basically, we could give direction to staff to bring this back as an item so that we can vote on, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. If you can come back as a resolution, there was, the original resolution, I was just looking at, I think it was fifteen forty-one, October twenty-third of twenty thirteen, and then it was amended on May twenty-second of this year, is Resolution fourteen twenty-two. And what we could do is bring it back in whatever direction the council states as a resolution amending the ordinance with the, I mean, the resolution.
Okay, and, and Mr. Bellis, if you would bring this back, but also, I, it was brought to us by Anthony, or, I mean, Mr. Fernandez, I guess, that more was charged to actually pay for the gates. So if we look into that too, so that we might use the money that was collected up to this point to pay for the gates.
That would be my guess, my question, French, Marietta, do we know if we have the money for this gate? We do. Okay, thank you.
All right.
As I understand, the direction would be to return the operated hour, or to the dumping hours to the way it was previously.
Well, I think with the gates, gates installed, and that'll be brought back to the full council for a vote in the next meeting.
And just a question, and the way it was operated previously was twenty-four seven?
Anthony?
I've not heard that, so.
Councilman On, what Mr. Lopez was referring to back in, October twenty-second of last year, before that, it was twenty-four seven, and there was just the, the swipe card, and that was it, and then we had some cameras, and that was it.
Okay, so now we're talking about going back to that with appropriate security measures, a double swipe, one for the gate, one for the.
Machine.
Machine.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Second one, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, sir.
Both those other haulers back there? Did you gentlemen want to say anything, or anybody got a beef with this?
It's all been said, we just need access, that's the main thing, more time.
Okay, all right, so we've got directions to staff, if you'll bring that back. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
If we can get it on our next agenda, if we can, if it's not too loaded already.
No pun intended.
Yeah. So we'll go back to matters from staff, Eco Park, locker rooms, update, Mr. Steve?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. I come to you today to give you an update on where we are, the status of building or installing locker rooms in the Eco Park. There, the good news is, we finally do have a contract with Wayne Rutherford General Contracting through CES. It's the first one the town's done, so it took a little longer than probably would normally, but it is in place and we're moving forward with that. We have consensus on and a plan for adding a training room to the existing storage building. And we have, in addition to the plan for the prefab metal building, we have two other prefab alternatives now. I'm meeting tomorrow morning with Wayne Rutherford and Mark Garbich, and I think Peter French of the Town Sports Alliance. We have five floor plans now, we'd like to whittle that down to one or maybe two and bring that back for you to approve so we can move forward. One of the, some of the difficulties have been establishing the criteria for what we want in the locker room. The costs are getting higher and higher as we add amenities, especially restrooms and showers. Plumbing is, is driving the cost up very high. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. So another thing we're going to do, what I asked Brian Greer to do, he's in contact with the soccer coaches, and they're also kind of fueling the, the, the criteria crunch. So what I asked him to do was come back to us with their top five criteria. What, as a soccer coach, what are the top five most important things you need in a locker room for a soccer field? So once we get that, we'll incorporate that into the design. Once we have a design, we can order a building. Then we can start with the site prep. So we can't really do anything until we have a plan approved and order a building. And that's where we are. I stand for any questions.
Council, Mr. Bellis?
Initially, we gave great latitude to the Town Sports Alliance on this, and they understand the reasons for that, but it's kind of waffled back and forth a few times here, and I, I think it's Mr. Canovick's view as well as mine, that we kind of need to bring this to fruition. So I would ask that Mr. Canovick and myself have latitude after this next meeting at looking at designs and given their budgetary and time considerations, that staff be able to make the final decision on the design, realizing it takes into account the basic things that TSA asked for, and that we proceed with this contract before we lose another year.
Council, Council Peralta?
Mary, yeah, I think I agree with it, I guess the thing is just, too many people.
They all have good intentions.
Well, but the other thing too is, my question is, where are we at in, I mean, every time they give you a design, are we getting an approximate cost?
Yes, sir.
And what's the top and what's the bottom?
It ranges anywhere, well, one of the alternatives that I came up with, or I'm going to suggest tomorrow, is one I found from University of New Mexico at the Clower Campus, they have C cargo containers for you to set. I thought the same thing when I heard that, but I went out and looked at them.
We have some in the back of the.
Uh, they're different. These are, they're eight by twenty, they can be combined to make them sixteen by forty. An eight by twenty container costs seven thousand dollars. So if we can figure out what's the most important thing, we could possibly use those. I mean, they're, they can be converted with walls, ceilings, heat, lighting, you've got room to put some benches in, and a, and a container above to put your gear, and you change your uniform, you go out and play soccer. So we can cover them and stucco them, if somebody's concerned the appearance won't look good, they can be set right down on top of a gravel surface, I mean, but they can be ready in three weeks. So there, that's an alternative I'm going to pitch tomorrow. We also got a quote from the same company that we got quotes on for restrooms for Kikarson Park, for, for a concrete building. And again, because we had restrooms and showers, that quote came in at three hundred and fifteen thousand. So I came back, I went back and said, what else you got?
But why are we getting all these other things when we went with a contract with a particular company?
We haven't done that yet. The contract we have is with Wayne Rutherford to.
To.
To work with us to then decide on a plan and then order a prefab building.
And how are we getting that contract through procurement since he's not an architect or an engineer?
In his current contract, he is allowed subcontractors that are civil engineers, electrical engineers, and architects.
And he's an engineer?
He's a general contractor.
That's not a professional service.
That's what we have, he is a professional, it's a professional service contract through CES, or general contracting.
No, it's got to be a bid contract. You can't use a general contractor as a professional service contractor. I'm sorry. The whole thing that we had a discussion about a couple of weeks ago or a month ago was the fact that Wayne Rutherford was going to come under this company that was authorized under GSA to provide us with services to build us a building. And under that, we could hire him because he would be a subcontractor to them, because the contractor would be with them, not with him. And we changed that. I'm, I'm sorry, but I can't see this as qualifying as a, as a professional service contractor.
Let me be clear, the contract is with the town and CES, so it isn't with, directly with Wayne Rutherford.
But if you're not going to buy the building from CES, how can we contract with him? But if you're not gonna buy the building from CES, how can we contract with him?
He buys it, he places the order on behalf of the town as a CES licensed contractor. And then the, the building companies, the prefab companies, also have to be on CES or GSA schedule.
Okay, now you're telling me University of New Mexico people have, are building contractors or building providers to CES?
UNM used CES, the company that has?
No, no, you're not answering my question right, Steve.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
You're asking Wayne Rutherford to do this design stuff?
Yes, sir.
And then he's gonna go out and get a building from who knows who, who isn't necessarily under the contract with CES to provide buildings?
No, any building he orders will be either from, directly from CES, who are, have already established relationships and gone, and gotten all the certifications for CES, or GSA, the GSA schedule. It won't be from any company that he picks, that he's done business, it has to be a company certified through CES. I, I can show you.
I, I need to see the CES contract, because I'm having a hard time with the way this game is being played, I'm sorry. And I just don't understand where one fits into the other, and so if CES is the person we're buying from, they've gotta be able to certify to us that they have approved contracts under their government approval to buy from XYZ company or ABC company.
Right, so for example, the, the metal building we were discussing initially is from a company called Palomar, which is a CES approved, approved company. So, it's all within the CES system. So it's already gone through procurement, and is certified.
But you were talking about some other possibilities.
Right, and any of those would also fit that criteria. We wouldn't order a building from a company that isn't within the CES system, or GSA or state contract.
But ordering a building under GSA or state contract doesn't qualify under what we're doing with Wayne Rutherford and this other company, because that, that contract, my understanding is, that is a design-build deal, and you can't use them just to design and then buy from somebody else.
Well, Mr. Rutherford, the company doesn't build the buildings, he would order a prefab building.
I understand that, but it all has to go through them, and so you can't go and get a GSA built building, aside from the contract with the other company. So this is where I'm having a problem with terminology you're using, to understand how it all ties together, because you can't use one company just for design, because that's not their contract, that's not what they were approved to do, they're approved to build and, to design and build, so you can't separate the two.
Mr. Mayor?
That's what I'm having a hard problem with.
What I understood it as, Steve, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that we were gonna contract with CES for design, development, and build out of the building, and really the only thing that Wayne was gonna do was drop-set and do the site work for, for the construction. But that was all supposed to go through CES as, I mean, we weren't paying Wayne anything, we were paying CES.
Well, that's correct, the contract is with CES.
So we, I mean, outside of?
So they have, they have like a pool of vendors, within this cooperative educational system, system, and so Wayne Rutherford, General Contracting, is one of those approved vendors. So what he does, or what he will do for us, is help us finalize the plan for the building, find a company within CES, and quite often, I wanted to make this point, companies that are CES approved are quite often also GSA, on the GSA schedule and state contracts. We will not buy or order anything that isn't within the CES system. So he is being hired to help us finalize the design, and then place the order with CES to have the building delivered, and then help us develop the site, so that the building is installed.
But that is, we are contracting that service through him?
Yes.
The city?
The town of Taos is contracting with CES.
And then CES is contracting to Wayne, okay, 'cause the way I understood it this way was saying that we were gonna contract with Wayne to finalize with CES, and that, to me, doesn't meet procurement.
That's correct, we would have to bid that out, if, we couldn't just have a contract with Wayne, but as he is a qualified, certified CES vendor, we can do business with him directly.
So if it goes through CES, then?
I'd still like to see that contract.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time seeing how he qualifies as a designer, and under our requirements as a commercial entity, we've gotta have to have an architect, engineer stamp on it, he's not qualified to do that.
That's correct, well, so, most of these prefab buildings, and we wouldn't get one that wasn't, come already permitted, they're already, they're built to spec, they're inspected and permitted before they're even shipped to the location, so there's that. But within his agreement, he is allowed to hire an architect to finalize the design, to contact civil engineers, plumbing, electrical engineers to help with the site prep. I have, I have the purchaser right here with, with.
I wanna see the contract.
We haven't spent a penny either, yet.
I wanna see the contract.
Okay. I'll just say, this is the first time we've used CES, so we're all kind of learning as we go.
Steve, I want to thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Is this thing gonna get built in time for spring training for collegiate teams that wanna come up here?
I'd like to say yes.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Given any unforeseen circumstances, I, I, I'm confident we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was wondering, I had seen a floor plan a couple of months ago that Brian Greer had, and it was for all the upgrades or necessities inside the locker rooms, and I was just wondering if that ever, if they're gonna do those upgrades, or if it's just gonna be a shell, basically?
Well, so, that's, that's what we gotta get, that's the nut we have to crack, is what is it gonna look, what is the finished product gonna look like? Are we gonna go with a basic set of locker rooms, or are we gonna go with one with the referee's room with a private shower for the ref, and, I mean, so we need to kind of just get down to the basics of what we need, there are other things we wanna spend the money on as well, so.
Well, they were basic necessities, I don't think they were, were showers, private showers for the refs or anything, they were just basic needs for?
So we've gone anywhere from $40,000 to $340,000, in a range with, based on the amenities. So that's what we really need to get to, is like, what, is a budget limit, or a criteria that should have these basic features and no more, that would help a lot, and then tomorrow, I'm gonna try to get these guys to agree to that.
Let's get it done, Steve.
Yes, sir. Please, thank you.
Get it done. So, council, we need, any direction, I know Mr. Bellis asked, if, I know Counselor Peralta would like to see the contract, so.
Well, I'd just like to have Steve design it, and give it to an architect, engineer, or CIS, and get it over with.
Well, that's another option.
Cut out the middleman and get this thing done.
I'd love to. I think this way?
I've seen you, I've seen the stuff that you've come up with, and it's better than a lot of the other stuff we've seen, so.
And my roof doesn't leak.
That's right.
Not yet.
Not yet.
So, council, we wish to give that, I guess, authority to Steve and Rick to move this project forward.
Yeah, I think that's, Mr. Mayor, that's what Mr. Bellis and Steve were asking for, and I'd really like to empower them, it's great to get ideas, but, you know, final call, final bell, you and Rick sit down, and, and decide, and let's get the thing built, so we don't lose any more opportunities, and make that perk begin to work for us.
And the one thing I would ask then, it, once we do that, is that we get the full backing of everyone, that, that's what we want.
That's what we're gonna do.
That's what we're gonna do.
So, we have a motion, is that a motion?
I don't think we need the motion, we've already allocated.
Yeah, I mean, but giving them, giving them direction, I think will require a motion. So?
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Motion, a second, any further discussion, call for the vote.
Councilmember Khan, two?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peddleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
We hope to see a building here in the very near future, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So we'll go on to item?
Tonight, four years ago.
We'll go out on to item C, CYE 2014 Justice Assistant, Assistant Grant, Chief?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager, this is Edward Byrne Memorial Fiscal 2014 Justice Assistance Grant, it's been submitted, we have requested The, what we're hoping to do, there's, there's four goals for this, first is upgrade the record management system and the computer aided dispatch, second is to train dispatchers and TOS officers on proper data collection methods and procedures, the third is to train local law enforcement officers on the latest street level interdiction techniques, and then to train players in 28 CFR, 28 CFR is a federal mandate, talks about intel gathering, I'm sorry, and there's a fifth goal, which is to upgrade and install computers in the police vehicles. So, from this grant, $22,000 is requested for the SLUTH upgrade, approximately $11,000-ish was requested for the training, the computers came out to be in the area of, I'll come back over here. So I'm sorry, so the SLUTH upgrade was gonna be $22,000, the training, $13,680, and the in-car computer system, $82,600. And so that is where we're at right now, and speaking with the DPS Grant Department, we've actually developed a pretty good relationship with, with them, I, I asked them kind of what our chances were on this, and they, they told us that they believe that we'll get something out of it, but probably not the $119,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gonzalez?
Chief, you mentioned the $22,000 SLUTH upgrade?
Yes, sir.
That's back again?
It's back again, sir.
The same SLUTH upgrade we said we weren't going with, because we were going to Spillman?
That's correct, sir. Spillman is looking that it won't be integrated, I'm told, until approximately September of next year. In, in the meantime, I still am dedicated to attempt to make the department a data-driven organization, in order to do that, I need to have the data. A number of the problems that we've come up before, which I've expressed to the council, has been inability for us to recreate data, the data being entry, has been entered all sorts of different ways, the training has degraded throughout the years, so once again, we have the same issues, if I wait for Spillman, it's throwing us back another year. If we are able to get this money and upgrade it, this does still do a couple things for us. One is, it gets the additional training for all the officers and dispatchers, so that we get them all on one sheet of paper again. The second thing is, it allows us to clean up our data inside SLUTH, so when we do transfer to Spillman, we've already taken care of part of that step. And the third thing is, it allows us, allows myself and Ms. Bishop, and, to really start figuring out hotspots, and really start going down the data-driven decision-making road that we have. So one argument could be that if we get the $22,000, a person could argue that that is using $22,000 for a very short amount of time. The other argument is that the $22,000 really could do leaps and bounds for us to go down the road that we need to go down, and start, and kind of make that turn that I need to make.
So under the new upgrade, and I don't know how the heck you'd even ask this question of SLUTH to Spillman is, are they gonna transition into each other? I mean, are, is your data transition gonna be seamless, or are you gonna lose stuff?
It's, it's never possible, really, to do a seamless transition, I mean, we're gonna lose some data, and how much we're gonna lose, we don't know. Now, we are purposely gonna lose some data, for instance, for the name files, we have some name files that are in excess of seven years old, that have had, never, never had activity done on it, we need to get rid of that. Some of the redundancy, we'll get rid of that, so we're purposely gonna, gonna filter out a lot of stuff. Even when we transfer from SLUTH 9 to 10, there's a possibility we'll lose some data there, so that's, that's never for sure. When we're going from SLUTH to Spillman, they're at, from what I understand, the last conversation that we had, the county had found a company that was prepared to do the transition of, of that data, that person apparently has a significant amount of experiments, of, of experience with SLUTH, and so the hope is that we'll get the vast majority of the data transferred over. More importantly, however, is that, once we get the SLUTH, and once we get the training, the data that we're gonna get from that point forward should be more credible data. So, I, I think that would actually be a fair trade-off, depending upon how much data's lost, of course, but there's a nominal amount of data, I think that, I think the training to get everybody back on the same sheet of papers is, is worth it.
Well, Chief, I want to thank you for pushing this agency forward with, with data-driven information, you know, it's something that I've talked about, you know, since I was elected with regards to trends, and what plagues us, what doesn't plague us, where should we be focusing our efforts, rather than just running in the dark.
Exactly.
And I want to commend you for the efforts that you've made, if this wasn't coming via grant, probably wouldn't put my stamp of approval on it, just because of the fact that it was allocated once, and re-articulated back into the general fund, and I know how much you've expressed the need to go, and we could have already been done with this. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
So, council, anything else? Not Chief, you, or just basically, there's just an update on this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, I, that's what I thought, so.
Yes, sir, just want to make sure.
And thank you, continue to look for grants and opportunities to bring money to the department, you know, we see that, you know, hopefully, we get some new cars, we get some, you know, other things that continue to upgrade our department, so thank you.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Peralta?
Just one question, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And maybe I missed it in your presentation, because I was doing a couple of other things.
Yes, sir.
What is the date on which you would hear as to a yes or no on this grant?
On this one, I don't, I don't have a date, I, there, I had an email from them yesterday, they asked a couple of questions, and then from what I understand, this is going out next week to the committee, I don't know how long the committee's gonna take to, to review it.
Is that a local committee or a national committee?
This is a local committee, this, this Edward Byrne, and they allocated $800,000 to New Mexico for agencies, aside from the Department of Public Safety, so the, as opposed to comprised of, of agencies inside the state, they're gonna make the decision.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. And also to upgrade the, to update the council, we also have a $61,000 grant application to COPS, that was for the mediation program, that is supposed to be decided at the end of October, so we're still, we're still waiting on that, so our fingers are crossed. We have a lot of support from the mediation committee, and from the district court, and magistrate court mediators, and, and I think if we get that money, we'll go down a pretty good road, so I'll let you know when, when that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then we'll go to item D, Transfer of Housing and Urban Development Grant to Community Against Violence, Marietta?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, town manager, what you have before you here is, we've been the fiscal agent for this HUD grant for the Community Against Violence, to provide shelter services for displaced or homeless victims of domestic violence. We have a situation this year that we are trying to transfer this to them to meet their July, August, and September services for payment. We have a procurement issue that we haven't been able to resolve at this time with the attorney and myself, that HUD would be okay, that we would transfer this grant directly to CAV, as long as all the checks and balances with HUD's program and CAV is in, in good standings. So we're just trying to get this one transferred to them, or find a place in the procurement code to award them the contract directly, but in this case, I think this is the best situation. The shelter, it will depend on a lease, they will, we will have to get a lease with them, and I think we have a one that's just on a month-to-month, but it needs to be a long-term lease for HUD to approve the grant transfer to them. So, really, they did the application, they got you to sign the grant agreement, Mayor, they do all the reporting, the only part that we do is, we open up the purchase order, we- The only part that we do is we open up the purchase order, we draw down the money from the lock system and distribute it to them. So really, I would talk to Melinda Dunn, Melinda Williams, I think, yeah, Melinda Williams. And, you know, depending if HUD is okay with it, you know, we'll sit down with them the first month to help them out with that lock system.
Marietta, is this the first year they received this?
No, this is probably the, I think, since 1990. And, and the process is that they just have to, it's a continuum care program throughout the whole state, and everybody applies. And I think the state sends in the application to the federal government, and that's how it's awarded down to the local levels, to different... And I think I put the, all the recipients, and we've had it since the domestic violence shelter opened up, and I'm saying, and then the council member probably knows.
And the procurement code kind of changed the...
Well, the procurement code this year, if we called it sole source, we have to post it online for 30 days. And we couldn't start the contract until after the 30th day if there is no protest. So that could be done, but then services for July and August and September, after 30 days, we're already into October. And it's not like they could speed up their billing and bill us for the last, whatever, eight months at a higher rate because the services they provide are on a continuous basis monthly with employees and utilities and food and whatever costs they have. So I...
Mr. Lopez, I'm going to turn to you. Is this the way we want to move forward?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this issue came to me, I think, in the first week after I started here. And what it appeared was, is that the contract last year stated that it was procured under the State Use Act, which is an act that says that it declares the goods or services a sole source if the provider has 75% or more of its employees handicapped, which clearly does not apply in this case. And so that raised a red flag. The grant administrator is the mortgage finance authority, and I had a discussion with their attorney. They really had no interest at all in discussing the matter. And so I had a conversation with Randy Van Black of the Municipal League and then confirmed that with conversations with Bob Malone, who has an extensive experience with these kind of issues. And their statement both is that the state, through MFA, is notorious for just kicking the can down the road on the procurement issue. We were trying to find an exception to the procurement, and I haven't really found one, although the HUD grant agreement does seem to name CAV and other agencies throughout the state as the designee of the grant itself. So with a little bit of further research, that may find an exception, that might, may provide an exception to procurement as far as they're concerned. Everybody has told me that there is no exception to procurement as far as they're concerned. So we did have discussions, or I did, with Ms. Williams, and we're going to meet with them on Thursday, I think. The approach, the person that found and has continually to be involved in this is a guy named Herb...
Hank Hughes.
Hank Hughes.
Hank Hughes.
And he's with the Coalition Against Homelessness in Santa Fe. And his... He said that, you know, it may be that HUD would grant directly to CAV. Where, the town of Taos's name is the recipient, sub, the sub-recipient is designated as CAV. And so Ms. Williams seemed interested in pursuing that. That HUD has to agree to that. There's a lady in Albuquerque that represents HUD, and she wants us to apply to do that. And it doesn't seem like it's going to be a big problem, but it may cure what Ms. Fambro just discussed concerning the fact that we are now in October and we don't have a contract in place. And so that, that's the other issue that's raised is Ms. Williams is concerned that she may lose the grant unless she can prove to HUD that she's providing services for the full 12 months of the year, which started July 1st. And so she's concerned about that. Related to this is the fact that through a grant, the town of Taos received the property which Ms., from which Ms. Williams is operating her facility. And we are also discussing the possibility that's going to be included in our meeting with her on Thursday of transferring that property, certainly subject to council approval, to CAV so they can continue both with the property and the grant proceeds in the future, and the town would be uninvolved in it.
Counselor Peralta?
I'm going to go back to a discussion I had with Marietta a couple of days ago. Since this is federal funds, and since the feds have designated CAV as a recipient of these funds, doesn't that in itself exempt it from state procurement? Because, because it's done, in other words, the feds have designated them as a sole source. And through whatever means that, that they made that determination, they made it. And they did that with the other agencies around the state for the same purpose, which doesn't put us under the procurement of the state of New Mexico, because it's not state funds.
I think you're...
And it's not, and it's not local funds, so it doesn't fall under that act. And this is where I was coming from and indicating to her is that if, if the HUD wants to give those funds directly to CAV, all the better for that because then it really takes it out of procurement. But my thought was that if, if the designation by the feds that these are the recipient of these funds, they've already made the fact to us that it's a sole source. And based upon that, I think, is the reason that the mortgage, New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority has kicked the ball down the road and saying that we don't have anything to do with it because the feds have already made the designation. And so that's what I would look at as, as the possibility for this. And then do the application to the people in Albuquerque to get it pushed around so we don't have to deal with it anymore at all. And it saves some time with our staff and what they're doing in handling the money anyway.
I agree with you. I just actually learned it today that there is a document included in the grant agreement that seems to designate CAV as the, as the grantee. It looked to me earlier from a letter that was submitted by Hank Hughes that it was Hank Hughes that was designating them as the grantee. So I'm going to, now that I have this information, I'm going to look to see if I can find some exemption from the procurement code. I think you're right. I had a discussion earlier today with the grants administrator for the county, and she indicated to me that if it's clear that they are designated by the federal government as the grantee, that there's no procurement requirement. And so I'm going to pursue that. And, and if we can do that, then the possibility is we can just date the contract. This was all done in March of this year, but it didn't come to my attention until mid-September. And so what I'm hoping is that it might be to, to just date the contract July 1st and then get it approved, and she gets paid, submits her invoices, and everybody goes on. When the issue arose, though, it seemed to be that a preferred way may be to go is to transfer the whole thing. And that still may be a way to go, but we could do it for next year if we can find some kind of exception in this case.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd actually strongly recommend that we continue to follow that course for several reasons. The fly in the ointment in this is that continuum of a care money is based, it's allocated on a county-wide basis based on an industry of need from a federal allocation. Normally, a county plan is developed on how that money is allocated. And shelter is certainly permissible use of it. Typically, emergency shelter generally is the first tier, followed by some of these other more specialized shelters. Problem is, we have, in New Mexico, we haven't developed county plans, which means that HUD does not administer these grants directly. So there has to be a state pass-through for it, which becomes the Mexico Mortgage Finance Agency, which typically isn't in the business of doing social service grants, but since they're the only registered entity capable of receiving HUD money directly, they become the pass-through. Now, that means that the grantee and the pass-through really, and that creates that state plan, is a state agency. And at that point, HUD is dealing with whatever they're adopting that plan for. One of the concerns Jacob and I had was that whether this was even a permissible use of the money because it's just blanketly used for any cost of the shelter. And typically, you have to negotiate as part of that state plan a per diem rate, which has to match up to the federal acceptable rates. So I think there's an awful lot of problems with this. The second one of which is the building, that I've been in communication with HUD, and they have indicated that the money has to go with the building. If we have any desire to get rid of the building, we should see about how do we get rid of the money. And so I'd suggest we keep passing down this road. Let HUD make the decision that if we can move the money, are they also, then, are they also acceptable with CAV taking the bill? They'll demand that CAV have control of the building if they have the money. They've already been very clear about that. And I, I just think, once again, we get back to this large inventory of buildings that we carry that are not self-maintaining. And we need to start finding a mechanism for putting them back onto the organizations that are getting the funding to operate them.
Well, maybe something we look at down the road, but the issue at hand is what do we do immediately? And that is the reason that I'm looking at it this way. Even though the money is passing through a state agency, it's not the state agency's money. It's a pass-through because the feds, HUD, has said this money goes to CAV based upon the fact that they have that building in their possession, regardless of homes, that they're still in their possession. So, you know, I, I'm just, I'm going to play against you, but the, the point is, is to make sure that, that we don't shut down a facility that needs to be operated. And we have to find the best and quickest way to get this thing solved. And then we can look at the long-term solution. If that's the council's wishes that we get rid of a building, we do that. If the council says we don't, we don't. But in the meantime, I still think that CAV is the only organization within this community that has the ability to do what they're doing. And that's being recognized by the feds, and we should just accept that. And I think, I think the state agency already did that by not wanting to deal with it.
Because, I don't know, what they do is they have an application process, that's what they do. They don't do an RFP process, they just do an application process. So I attached the application that CAV did submit on behalf of the town of Taos to get these funds. So however, if we can meet the procurement, we said sole source, we know it's sole source. We, he's willing to go back to July 1st after that sole source is posted, or we can make a determination, and Sharon can make a determination, that this is sole source and the services have been provided. I don't know, I'm not the legal guy, but that was one of the thoughts until we said we would try to transfer it to them. Because then for sure, July, they would get paid July, all these services if it went directly. But there's other ties now to it going to them directly, and it's the lease to the building is the main law. That's just the lease, that's not ownership of the building yet, that's just the lease.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Peralta, I agree with you completely. I, I think that we need to do this and do this as quickly as possible, one way or the other. This has been the most tortuous issue since I've been here that I've faced and one that I've spent a huge amount of time on. And I am not getting any clear answers. And I think perhaps the way to do it, and, you know, I think the problem was is that I didn't want to make the same mistake as what happened last year when the State Use Act was used. So I want to make sure that whatever route we take is, is reliable. And so if we can figure out a way to, at this point, state that it's exempt from procurement and that we can go back to July 1st and pay them the full amount, I think that's the way to go, if there's a way to do it. And that, and that's what I'm striving to find out. Randy Van Black told me that there's just no way to do it. And Bob Malone told me that this is 90%, 98% of the, of all the procurement issues that he's dealt with since he started working for, as a government lawyer, that this is probably 98% of the problem is this issue right here. And he hasn't ever seen his way clear to an acceptable solution. He had a lot of potential ways to go, none of which he said he would recommend. So we're working on it, but, but in the meantime, this other idea came up to perhaps transfer this quickly. I don't think, as Mr. Hughes said, it doesn't look like it's going to be very quick that way either, so. We'll see, we'll just do it as we can and then make it back to the council.
Have, have our auditors ever challenged this?
No.
Procurement?
Well, because sole source, we've met procurement sole source every year before last year as a sole source memo, which was different this year. And because I didn't get involved until they sent me the first billing, the mayor had already signed the applicant, not the application, but the grant agreement. So it didn't run through the channels like it should have. They did it directly to the mayor and then out the door. So that's why before it was sole source, but this year it's different. Sole source needs to be posted for 30 days, and we can still do that.
So had in May or March of this year, it had been declared by memo as sole source, and it posted in April, and then the contract written in May, we wouldn't be here right now.
So is that a change in state law as far as the posting?
Yes.
Yes, this year's, that's the first year in the procurement code. So because the agenda item has nothing to do with the award of the contract, we could at least maybe enter into a contract under the, the mayor's limit and then bring it back, at least to cover maybe the first couple of months because then we're going to be waiting another two weeks for a meeting. I don't know if that would work. I mean, it's open, you all know that this is the contract amount, but it's not award of the contract on the agenda item. It's to transfer it, unless we can change it.
Well, it's just a discussion, it's not, it's no action required.
Okay.
That was the fraction.
Just one last comment.
Now, your, your input is well appreciated.
Well, we've been doing this thing since... No, it's been longer than that because CAV was, had their own facility, had another facility rented prior to us building that one, which we built about '92, '94, something like that. And they'd already been in operation for 10 years or so getting funds. And since that time, and since we built that facility, it's always been a sole source, and it's never been questioned. So there had to be something maybe out there that was determined back when that this is, you know, because they've been getting this grant forever. And, and so maybe looking at some old paperwork, you might find something.
Well, I, I don't think there's a problem, I think it is a sole source. I don't think that's the issue. Had, we have a memo and declared it sole source, but the problem is, is that if we do that, then if we put out the memo and the notice on the website tomorrow, then the earliest we can award the contract is...
30 days.
October 24th.
I'm, I'm talking about a continuum of a sole source.
Oh, I see.
Not as a new sole source, but a continuum. In other words, they've been doing this for 20-some years. It's, it's already been proven, it's not a new section that you're declaring a new sole source. You're looking at saying this has already been in place forever.
Said, Ms. Fambro said the basis of the sole source last year, she just reminded me, wasn't the fact that it was a memo, it was because of the State Use Act.
It was an exemption. So, and every year that we, every year we did a, a single contract exempt sole source for only that one year. I don't know if you can extend it for years going forward, or you can only base it on that one year. I mean, we could go back and look and see if that's...
No, what I'm trying to say is that once you've declared them a sole source, even though it's a yearly contract because you get funding for a year...
For whatever reason, you're saying.
For whatever reason...
Is continuing.
You get continuous sole source.
I, I'm comfortable with doing that. We, and then, and then date the contract July 1st and go forward. We, and then, and then date the contract July 1st, and go forward. I'm, I, you know, I used to tell-
And then, and then we go to, to Mr. Bellis's situation, and let's just get it out from under us, and we'll not worry about it anymore.
Exactly. And, you know, I used to tell people that worked with me, that as long as you do the best you can, and try to do the right thing, then you can't worry about it. Hopefully.
Thank you.
I mean, we know the services are being provided, so.
So, on, on the agenda, it says consideration and approval to transfer the Housing and Urban Development Grant to the Community Against Violence. So, that's the way, the-
Oh, let me see.
The-
That, that, that was the intent.
Right. So no action can be taken, I mean, that's, that's-
Right.
You know, but I, I'm just, just questioning Mr. Lopez's, because that is on the agenda for that.
Well, I think it is. It is asking for approval to do that.
But, do we want it right now?
So, I think if you, if you have a motion to approve the transfer, then we can work on it.
Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest is that you give latitude to the staff, that since we're going to be meeting both with CAV, and we're in communication with HUD, and they wanted to see whether the elected body would in fact take action tonight to permit the transfer, and I indicated we would get back to them tomorrow as soon as that occurred, we would ask that you give us the latitude, that if it appears to the attorney and myself that we can move this under an interpretation of sole source quickly, to get full funding from July 1 on, that we'd be allowed the latitude to leave it where it is, but still continue the dialogue between CAV and HUD as to next year, or if it appears that there's a willingness by both HUD and CAV to do it, and that would allow them to claim back to July 1st, under their name, that we be allowed the latitude to do that as well. And then to report back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we allow staff to work with CAV, and the state, and the feds, to solve this problem in the best way possible for all concerned.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? None, call for vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Okay, I hope that's general enough for you.
We're, we're very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information, Pat.
We just hate to see CAV lose any funding. I mean, that's, that's, that's big.
Mayor Protim, I think that was about as, the only thing more general could've been, whatever.
Whatever.
Didn't come to me. But thank you, whatever.
So, go on to item E, Resolution 1448, Budget Adjustment Request, Marietta? So move, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion.
Wait, I have an amendment, I have a change in number. On number two, Transfer From The Street Repair Maintenance Project To Chumisa Area Improvements, Phase Three, in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, to cover the bid award for that construction. And Miranda and Fred will have that contract later, but those were the final figures, once they negotiated. So, thirteen-five.
Instead of thirty?
Instead of the thirty, they negotiated partial.
I'll amend my motion to amend as presented by Finance Officer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing non-seen, non-call for vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to Financial Update, to Marietta.
Um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, you have the financial report in front of you, let me see if I can get this. Oh, he's gonna do that. For August, we have our grocery receipts tax, you can see on the first part, appear in revenues. Our August tax distribution, which is really July's activity, was down thirteen point two four percent over last fiscal year at this time. You can see that the decreases were in accommodation and food services, equal to one hundred and one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, that's like forty-four percent down. And on retail trade, around twenty-six thousand six hundred, approximately eight point four four percent down. There were some increases under unclassified establishments, and healthcare and social assistance. Couple of notable revenue sources were in the franchise taxes, but we had a little lag between last year and this year for that, for that purpose there, that's why that increase was there. And, other than the grocery receipts tax, last year, we were up thirteen point nine-
Marietta?
Yes.
I'm sorry to bother. I'm looking at that thirteen point two four percent decrease in accommodation and food services. Have we tweaked our advertising budget to the point that we're not getting the same residuals coming back?
Well, there could be two things, and I was getting to it last year, this time, we had the Mumford and Sons, and we were up thirteen point, I think I have it here, thirteen point nine, I think it was thirteen point nine-nine percent.
So we're about flat.
So, we're pretty much flat from, if you take that out of the picture, a lot of people say, we're at the largest tax advisory board meeting, and some say, well, I didn't do good for Mumford and Sons, the, some say the forest, we were the only forest open. And so we had tourists coming in just to this area. So other people say, well, it could've been this, it could've been that. So, we're all up in the air. But you can see that it brought in some things, or some other activities brought in some, some activity, cause that's a big jump. So we're really flat at this time. Last year, when I did the projections for this year, which was a two percent increase, I took out that anomaly, I think it was like ninety-one thousand dollars difference, so that I could project correctly, and not with that big jump, so.
So last year, you had already accounted for it?
Yeah, last year, when I projected for this year's grocery receipts tax, but looking, when we go farther down, we already have September's, it's not looking as a projection that I saw happening, so you know, it's, now I'm gonna have to wait till October's comes in, and then do a really projection to the end of the year, with the numbers that I'll have.
So, real quick, then, back to that, have we tweaked that advertising budget?
We cut it about twenty thousand dollars after receiving a forty thousand dollar grant, so it pretty much nets out to about the twenty thousand dollars less, over the past two quarters.
Okay.
But we would actually, in a sense, you gotta think backwards, that the advertising that's reflected in this really was done before any changes were made to the budget. Because we're usually six months ahead in the advertising.
Okay.
Councilman Peralta?
And Marietta, does this include September's check, or not?
Uh, this, not right here, I have-
This is through August.
This is through August only, but I do have September's grocery receipts tax.
Could you give me an idea of where that's at?
Um, yes, let me just, September's actually came-
No, you'll bring it up again next month, but-
Yes, I'll bring it up again. Uh, you know, I can't even see, I'm sorry, cause I have two lights going. Uh, we're down three point three percent in September, so overall, four point, I'm gonna say seven-one, I can't even read, because I'm looking at two different things, so we're down July, August, and September.
So if you take the hiccup out for last year-
Then we're-
For whatever, whatever that caused that hiccup.
Right. Uh, you know, when I didn't do that, but we're probably close to even, probably close to even.
Still a little lower than last year, though.
Right. Still lower, but not extremely bad. And once I get October's, that'll be a complete four months, I think, usually the projections I do with that time are a lot more accurate, instead of just using maybe the first three or two months of the year. So you're right, based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so really, on the general fund expenditures, we're pretty much running close to last year's with a couple of things, executive, finance, and police. General fund expenditures are down about seven point three percent compared to last year this time, but we've had a slow start with procurement, and getting purchase orders out, and just staff changes, and, you know, sort of delaying some of those purchases from the department, so we can take part, a lot blame of that, just because we've been short-staffed. But Sharon is doing a really good job trying to get things out. Capital projects, really, one replaced the library HVAC system, I think we completed that in August, and then some encumbrances included the library roof, and the airport roof, and the post-of-sewer crossing. So if you can see, capital projects, thirty-two million, we only spent thirty-six in the month of August, and open purchase orders, sixty-one thousand. You'll see a lot more activity in Septem, well, probably not cash-wise, or money-wise, but progress-wise. We did a lot in September, a lot of bid openings, you'll see all of these awards coming up. Debt severance, nothing really, nothing due in the next thirty days. And you can just see, our year-to-date revenues are one point six million, compared to last year at one point seven. You can see the grocery receipts tax down, building permits slightly above last year at this time. And, no transfers happening yet, they're only done as needed, and expenditures were at one point one million, compared to one point two last year at this time. In September, you also see a big jump, we paid our self-insurance premium, which equaled to over five hundred and forty thousand dollars in September, so you'll see that reflected on the port, report next month. And, just a little, the charts that you have in front of you. A couple things that I wanna point out, on the enterprise fund, councilmember asked last month, why our water and wastewater was down. So, the billing calculation did show that there was less water usage, which turns into less sewer usage. And so that was down for the month of July, but in August, I double-checked that, and we actually, we're up a little bit for August's bill. So, that decreases pretty much so far, just really July's activity that was down, because of all the rain. People not watering, and doing that kind of stuff.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question real quick, Marietta, and this really doesn't pertain to right now, but this last leak that we had, Rick, do we know what our, our net loss was on that yet?
No.
Perceived net loss? French?
Which leak?
Well, both of them, between the two. Three.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, we, we don't have a number as of yet, I haven't finished the calculations. But as soon as we do, we'll be reporting it to the OSE, and, and on our monthly and annual report as well.
Okay, thanks, French.
Thank you.
I, I just have a question for him. And I, I know you're new to having this under you, but I was surprised at how much of the town had to be shut down with those leaks, because we've got isolation valves all over this town to, to solve that, you know. For example, in my house, I didn't lose a, a bit of pressure. And I was within two blocks of, of the leak on Cruzalta. So, and, and so, the, you know, you were down water, water, and I, I can't understand why the Wymer area was out of water with that leak on, on Cruzalta. Or why some of the other areas in town were out of water with the, the other two leaks.
Right. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, that's, we're working on trying to figure that out. We know that in the area of Cruzalta, and the neighborhood that wasn't affected, they were being fed off of the million gallon tank. And we were getting a backfeed from the, from the tanks that are here in town, they started pushing water to the south end of town, and that's why we started to isolate where Councilmember Gonzalez's residence is. And you're right, we do have isolation valves throughout the entire system. One of the, one of the interesting things that we found when we were repairing the leak in front of McDonald's, is that that leak was off of a four-inch line, a four-inch galvanized line, that runs parallel to the two main lines that we have on Paseo. And I'm, I don't know where that is tied in, it, it appears as if though, that line was constructed with the buildings that are, that are across McDonald's, which is the Chinese restaurant, the, the Taos Feed Store, the sewing shop, and the old moccasin shop. Those were all being fed off of a four-inch line. However, just right across the fence at La Belle Cleaners, that line was isolated. So we're getting a backfeed through what appears to be a private line, that was tapped into the municipal line forty or fifty years ago, I would imagine. So we're, we're working on trying to determine-
So someone's got free water?
I'm sorry?
Someone's got free water?
No, somebody's giving us free water.
No, it's, it, well, that's, that's an interesting thing, some, someone's either giving us free water, or there's a connection that's way down on the system, that we're, we weren't able to isolate. But, all of those properties that I just mentioned, they are metered. So again, we're, we're working on trying to determine where those feeds are coming from, and where they're going to.
Cause when you had a break in the water line off of Adobe and Old Conyuan Road-
Yes.
They shut me down.
Right.
Because they didn't know where the isolation valve was to cordon off that section-
Yes.
Until after I had a discussion with them, I said, oh, okay, you shouldn't have been shut off, and then they found the valve. So, I, I'm just saying is that, you know, this is the reason I'm bringing it up now, is because I would assume where I was at, I should've been shut down. But yet, you were able to isolate it without affecting me.
Right.
And so there's gotta be some way that we should've been able to shut that section down that you needed to repair, without affecting that whole Wymer top area, or, or any other neighborhoods around there that shouldn't have been affected, except Councilmember Hahn's.
That's, that's who we were targeting. No, you're, you're absolutely right, and we're working on, on trying to determine where those, where those systems come in, and how they, how they tie into each other, cause we were obviously getting a, a source from, I'm not too sure where at this point, but we will continue to work on that, to determine just exactly where it was coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Just for your information, I was at my building there on Cantu Hill, watering the plants. This was just when the break in Cruzalta had happened, so that's about all we knew about. But there was no water pressure there either. But then again, you found one, I guess, at the bottom of the hill, from us, so.
We, we did, and, and those, yeah, we did.
But you're the top of the hill.
I know, but there was no water pressure.
Yeah.
Marietta?
Um, just a couple-
Thank you, French.
Sorry.
That's, he's my water problem, no, he's, he's okay. Uh, I wanted just, on Communications Fund, you can see we're at a hundred and sixteen thousand this year, compared to last year at sixty-one. The county is paying the current fee, there is a partial June payment in here, that we sent out a bill for, I think, a balance of seventy-one thousand dollars, but they only paid twenty-four of that. So, we've gotta sit down and work with them, based on, I guess they're claiming, that was for the previous fiscal year, they're claiming we're not paying any of the lease, lease agreement at the ECC, and some other stuffs. So, they made that adjustment on their own, so I've gotta get with Leandro, and see how he calculated that. But they are paying currently, for the current year, the three hundred and forty that we boked out, too. So, I mean, good and, good and just, we need to discuss that with them.
The three hundred and forty does not include the lease, right?
Uh, the three hundred and forty includes the lease for six months only, for six months only. And then the other six months, it does not include. The budget included the lease only for six months till December.
I thought we had a, the agreement was that we wouldn't be charging the county that lease for two years.
I don't remember anymore.
Get Carson lease.
I think maybe, well, I don't know, I'm not gonna say, I don't remember.
I remember the JPA correctly, it says we wouldn't, they wouldn't be paying us, they would be paying us for the operation, but not for the lease of the building.
Yeah, so, they agreed on, cause I sent them the budget and the numbers, and they agreed on everything that was in there, and they agreed on the six months. Well, I'm taking they did, cause they're paying the three forty, and that's inclusive in there, that's included in there.
Okay, thank you.
But we do have to work back last June, June, and see their calculation, and I guess that's something that Rick can, can meet with Steve, and see why we didn't get it all paid. Cause we, we did it based on actual expenditures, and that's the calculation that we got. But we only got twenty-four seventy-one. But we're doing good, cause we're getting their money, at least timely basis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And one last thing, uh, right here, regional landfill charges, we did that increase on the landfill, the, the tipping fees. And you can see that, I pulled a couple reports, I had the girls in utility, and the amount currently is two hundred and thirty versus a hundred and eighty-six last year, so, and I did check the, the tonnage, and the tonnage is actually a little, a little bit down so far. So, the rate increase is taking- So the rate increase is taking effect the way that the rate study did show. You can see right away, councilmember Han, how, how that is reflective because the actual tonnage is less even and we're still getting the more money. Not that that's, well, that's good because that was the intent of it, to keep that fund solvent and getting a reserve built up and getting more money for the sales on that side. So, other than that, I did, uh, I did put the, I mean, we don't have to go through all of them. I'll go right here. And I did put July, August, September's G R T report in there. And also the, so you can see where we're at now. I don't know, I still can't read that, but that's where we're at right now. I think it's four point something. And also just the classifications for the last three months also, just showing a comparison of the decreases and increases for each month. And I'll, once I get the grocery receipts taxed, if you want, I can just send this to you on a monthly basis before I even get to the meeting, just so that you have it. I did that in the past. If you're wanting that, I can send that as soon as we get it, 16th of the month, next day. So-
That would be nice.
Other than that, I stand for any questions?
Council, any questions? None? Thank you, Marietta.
Thank you, Marietta.
Thank you, Marietta.
I'm sorry, I'm so blind. Okay.
Thanks, Marietta.
I got two more and then you're done with me.
Okay. So we'll go on to Resolution 1449, intergovernmental transfer of personal property. Marietta?
Mayor, councilmembers, this transfer is for three wood warming hot boxes to go to U N M. They want, they helped fix the leak, I guess, and this was in agreement. And we're just, it was left over from the equipment that we didn't originally give to them the first time we transferred all that equipment, chairs and so what, so far.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember-
Yes.
So we'll go on to H, Resolution 1450, intergovernmental transfer of personal property. Marietta?
Move.
Have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marietta.
Thank you, Marietta.
So go on to item-
Thank you, Marietta.
I, M O U with Taos Soil and Water Conservation District. Mr. Floyd, hi. Somebody want to grab a?
I read the M O U over, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and, and approval, and a second. Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
So go item J, we'll go to destruction of records?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve.
Seconds.
We have a second to discussion. Councilor Peralta?
What, what records are these?
They're in-
Um, there are several. There's, we have about 230 boxes. And I attached the backup from each department that's requesting records.
The reason I'm asking this question is that it seems like every time we turn around, we can't find records that we need that are ancient. Have any of these records been microfished?
We don't, we don't, we don't use Laserfish for all of our records. I've been trying to get staff on board to do that. And then we, Laserfish would be our records management system. But it's been hard, just limited staff, limited time. But if there are records that you're interested in that are listed that you would like to see that we Laserfish, we could do that. A lot of these records are copies of copies of copies, you know, that department has had and held on to for years. Finance has a lot of records that are currently in our archive room. And every year, they pull out boxes, replace with more boxes. And right now, they can't move anything out of their offices because they have so many boxes that are currently stored in the archive room. Everything is eligible for destruction.
And I understand that, but I'm just looking at a situation that we were talking about. In the planning department, on the planning and zoning ordinance, it seems to me that sometime back, we had on the books a airport zoning ordinance. It's not there anymore because I looked. And I don't know where, you know, over the years, some planning commission decided we didn't need it or staff. And so they, they- No, that they did, they just, they just took it out of the ordinance.
Those are historical records, so they should have never been destroyed. Planning ordinances should never have been destroyed. And I can tell you with the, with the, you know, change in planning over the last several years, a lot of their records are currently in the archive room and they're not labeled. They're, we hired somebody a few months ago to go through them and they, they were just so overwhelmed in that department that they never were able to give her direction on how, those were records that we wanted to have in Laserfish.
And I'm just bringing this up because this is something that the town and the county are going to have to get together on. And I'm almost positive it's there. I know I saw one from 1965 years ago. But I don't know how long that stayed on the books or, or what. And, and I thought it was updated in around 1990, but I'm not sure. But I can't find a record of it because the codified ordinances that we have now, it doesn't show anything in there about it. And there's no reference to it at all as being, what's the term? Deleted?
Yeah. And when they re-codify, they do delete, on the codification, they'll delete the old ordinance if it's been replaced. But we still have a copy of all ordinances that have been passed. So those old ordinances are still, in fact, all of the town council's ordinances are in Laserfish and those are accessible. So if it was a planning ordinance, or are you talking about the zoning map? That should have been-
No, it's not in the zoning map. This would be just the airport zone ordinance. So I'll, I'll get with you in soon when we can't find it.
Okay. And just to let you know, really, really soon, I know I keep saying this, but we're going to have access to all those records. You know, anybody will be able to go online and search through those records. We just have to fix the lease.
That's all my concern is I realize these are eligible for destruction, but sometime in the future, we might need-
Those records are never eligible for destruction, so-
No, 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 I mean from these. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And it would be nice if they were microfished, but that's my question. Thank you.
There is a motion, there is a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Council, councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll go on to, let's see, hold on. Contract with Northern Mountain Contractors, Mr. French?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Paul, I'm going through this. I'm going to pass this little elbow around. This was the, the leak right here.
Which leak?
Which?
All three of them? My house?
I didn't know this was somebody's-
Boy, that thing really got around, didn't it?
This was in front of McDonald's and this was tapped on to the galvanized line that I had mentioned earlier. I had met with the property owner and let them know that we will be going back probably in the spring to try and locate that line, physically locate the line, and pull all the surfaces out to a, to a plastic, a more modernized line and abandon that one in place. But this is, and if you take a look right here, this is where we cut it with the sawzall to, to repair the leak. But as you can see, it's been worn and, and it is going to blow again at some point, so.
Thanks, French. That was the good news, right?
That and every other pipe in town.
Yep, every other, every other neighborhood is-
This is piped up on this? We could have avoided the whole thing.
The clay pipes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a contract with Northern Mountain Constructors in the amount of 648,739.78 cents for the paving of Estes Road. And this is our C D B two project, and I will stand for any questions. Marietta mentioned earlier that it had been negotiated. So I seek your approval.
So, French, on, you know-
Back to the water line.
With the, with the contract, how does this work in with the lighting situation and stuff like that? Because that comes straight across, correct?
Yes.
You know, and I know there was going to be a light by the Department of Transportation installed there.
The signalized intersection?
Yes.
What, what we did, Mayor, was we married our design with that of N M D O Ts, which their consultant was Wilson and Company. So whenever they do construct the, the signalized intersection, it'll tie in to our design.
So you have any idea on timeframe?
On which one?
On, well, both.
D O T and Northern-
Yes. D O T and-
Yes, on, on the, on the D O T portion of the project, they did let it out to bid. They had one bidder and it was Northern Mountain Constructors. However, there was a discrepancy in the bid, so they rejected it. And they are, they have since gone out to bid on that again. And I, I don't know what their let date is on that. And as far as this one for the town of Taos, as soon as this is, if it's approved by the governing body, we'll get the contracts executed and give the notice to proceed to the contractor. And it's about a 45-day contract.
Possible getting that done before the snow flies, or?
Yes.
And what about the D O T, Mr. Mayor?
The D O T, I don't think the D O T is going to be, that's probably on their-
Couple of years out for that stoplight?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Han, no, it shouldn't be a couple of years out. It should actually be in the works already, as I mentioned. They, they had already put it out to bid, but they rejected the bid. There was a discrepancy with how it was computed.
So you, for instance, do you think it might work simultaneously with, with?
Yes. Well, that's, that's our hope, Mr. Mayor. We're, we've been in contact with, with the district engineer to, to see if that could, if that could happen while we're still working on our, on our road. And unfortunately, I have not heard back from him on, on a definite let date.
I heard a motion and a second. And a second, like, councilor Peralta? Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it's not directly related, but before French leaves, I'm going to assume you're going to boogie right after this.
That he has a couple more items?
Okay.
At least one more.
I'll wait, I'll wait. No discussion from me. Discussion.
Councilor Peralta?
So this is going to be, it's a little different. It's difficult for me to try to figure out where we're talking about. Is this Estes Road West, or is this?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Peralta-
Or is this off of Chamisa Road?
It, it is Estes Road West and it goes all the way up to-
Salazar?
To Salazar. And it turns south and ties into Chamisa Road.
Okay, so this is a project we talked about a year and a half ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's where I thought it was, but I wanted to make sure.
Councilor Han?
Well, not directly related, but kind of with this subject. I've had a number of citizens, French, contact me about the possibility of doing a roundabout over there. I've talked with the manager a little bit. I've talked with Ms. Commissioner Romero a little bit. What's your feeling about a roundabout down there on Estes? Just off the cuff.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Han, that the N M D O T did study that. However, they didn't want to get involved in the acquisition of Rideaway on the east side, which would have been from-
Casa de Valdez.
Casa de Valdez.
Rio Grande's.
And Rio Grande's. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
So we'll go on to item I, Al, contract with Armstrong Engineering, French?
Mr. Mayor, we went out for R F Q for professional services to be utilized for projects on the airport. We have three proposers, Delta, Armstrong and Molson Corbin. The panel that was assembled to review the proposals were myself, Alex Abeta and Lindsay Webb. She's, she's a member of the Airport Advisory Committee. So when it all filtered out, Armstrong was the, the strongest proposer. They received the most points. And I am here before you seeking approval to award this contract. Attached to your, to your packet is, is a scope of work and it lists 16 items. Each one of those items, if they are, if we engage in any one of these, we will get a fee proposal. That fee proposal will come back to the governing body for approval. And this is a, a one-year contract, which will be renewed each year for the next three years upon approval of the mayor and council.
Councilor Han?
Well, forgive my ignorance. And I want to thank the Armstrong folks for hanging out pretty much all day. And truly, I feel a little bit ignorant about this. I thought we just approved the airport expansion. And now I'm, I, I just want to understand this a little bit better, French. So I thought we just approved this and that the scope of work was already included, like the, you know. Explain this a little bit to me.
Absolutely.
What's going on here?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Han, the, the contract that was, or it wasn't even a contract. It was Task Order G that was approved prior to, was specific to the first phase of the runway. That long-term contract is going to sunset. So therefore, we need to go out for R F Q again for the professional services that are needed at the, at the airport. Is that?
I'm still confused. I wasn't the smartest kid in the class, French.
That makes, well, that makes two of us.
No, you're pretty smart.
Councilor Han, could I ask some questions that might be able to help you?
Okay, go for it, yeah.
So Phase Two, is that still under contract with Armstrong to complete the runway?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Peralta, it, it is not. It is not.
So all of the design work and stuff for the completion of that runway, which Armstrong did, would be redone again if we give the contract to somebody else for Phase Two?
That would more likely have to happen. The, it, the, the design for the entire airport runway was completed. However, the, because of the funding issue, it was broken up in half and it had to be repackaged to put out to bid just for the dirtwork. The second phase of it will be for the actual design of the hard surface. And again, it would be part of one of these tasks, but it wouldn't necessarily need to be redesigned.
But my understanding is, is that Armstrong already designed the hard surface. The only thing that they would need to do, or somebody else would need to do, is put together the bid documents and send that out for Phase Two. So when that normally fall under the natural contract with Armstrong, because Armstrong's here, can you come up for us?
Let me, let me, Mr. Mayor, councilor, part of the problem, and I just received this contract yesterday afternoon, actually. And it's my understanding after quite a bit of inquiry. The problem here is that the contract with Armstrong expires by its terms, September 30th. And it's been renewed the four times, so we can't renew it. And it's been renewed the four times, so we can't renew it. So if we don't award a new contract, then we have nobody in place to do any services with regard to the airport.
So can you hold on that a little bit? Let me have Armstrong come up and talk to me a little bit. It would seem kind of silly that the contract that we gave you, Armstrong, to finish the design of the airport, which only lacked then by putting it into two pieces, is the documents for the bid, the second process. And I don't understand why that contract wouldn't be just amended and extended for that specific purpose only. Now, there's a bunch of other things in here that don't pertain to that, so, because I'm looking at it, I'm looking at some of the scope of the work, and it says new runway, taxiway, lighting, and...
No, I'll clarify.
So, no, no, so let's clarify the contract that you are under right now.
Okay. Currently, we have a contract with you to, for this work that's currently going to happen for the construction contract. I think that's what Councilman Han was referring to. Yeah, G, as this French said. So, and G, that was for the construction services, for our inspection services for this phase of the project. That's what this, that's what was just approved, okay? The FAA in general, so everybody understands, and I'll try to clear this up, hopefully this helps. The FAA requires communities, whether you're a county-owned airport or a city-owned airport, to go out for professional services every four years, okay? You have the RFP. So that's where, our four years was up, it ended. As of September, our four years is done. So the town of Taos went through your RFP process, through the FAA guidance, AC requirements, advisory circuit. So you're required, in order to get federal monies, you're required to go out every four years for the professional services. That's what this is for.
Now, but let me, but get a clarification, though, here, is that because one of the, one of the... Under your last four-year contract...
Sir.
One of the responsibilities that we contracted with you was to design the runway.
Yes, sir.
From start to finish?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Then, because of funding, we decided to split it up into two different projects. One is the one we're under right now.
Correct.
And then the second phase, which is the other one, which is already designed and done, but not the bid documents.
Yes, sir.
So the way I look at this new contract is we're doing it over again. So how does, how does the body of work that we paid you for already not relate to the scope of work that's outlined in this new contract?
It really doesn't, okay. The FAA would, we could continue...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, the FAA has already accepted the design in its entirety. However, because of, because their current contract is going to sunset September thirtieth, and it's the fourth year of a four-year contract, we can't, because of the procurement, we can't amend the contract anymore. We have to go out for professional services, so...
I understand that, but let's say, for example, that we didn't contract with you now, we contracted with Molson Corbin or XYZ Company.
They would have the option of accepting our work. They could say, we accept Armstrong's work, we know them.
And if we didn't? And if they didn't? Will we pay for it twice?
Sir, that's up to, yeah, it'd be up to the FAA, the town, and Molson Corbin to sit down at a table and go through this.
So I'm having a little bit of problem with the language in this contract. Because it doesn't stipulate any previous work done, it talks basically about new scopes of work. New runway, taxiway, new runway, taxiway lighting, new terminal building, and I even think you guys didn't design a terminal building, so I'm going to take that off of my question. Main access road? Those come to my, to mind immediately, that those are already designed in the process, so why are they back in the contract the way they're listed here? Shouldn't they be more delineated as to Phase Two, or Phase Three, or whatever it is that we're going into, rather than whole new language?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, that's absolutely correct. Again, we would be doing this on a task order basis, and instead of, and they wouldn't be for, for design, they'd be for packaging and bidding out for the services. Or for the, for that specific task.
But that's not the way I read it, okay? Language is too general for me with all of the stuff we've already paid for. So if we're talking about tasks, we should be talking about tasks that really need to be done that haven't been done yet. And if they're related to already tasks that we started, that we talk about them as being Phase One, Phase Three, Phase Fives, Phase Eight, Phase Hundred and Twenty, because I don't know how many years we've been doing this damn thing. Excuse the language.
Right. And we were just, what we were trying to do was just keep in line with what had been done in the past with issuing task orders, or tasks for each, for each phase of the scope of work at whatever stage it's at. And, and again, if, for example, if we talk about the airport master plan, that'll have a, an in-depth description of exactly what that is, which we'll come back to the mayor and council for consideration. And it'll have a fee schedule attached to it as well.
So let me ask one final question, and then I hope I helped you a little bit, Councilmember Han. How do we prioritize the tasks?
The FAA typically...
Other than, other than the one that's going to follow here shortly?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, the way we dissected this, the overall development of the airport was through the ICIP, and the way they were prioritized on that is the way we would approach the letting of this work under this new contract. And that's, that's one of the reasons why some of those points, or some of those tasks received more points than, say, the, excuse me, the perimeter fencing. And that's why it was outlined in the, in the ICIP that, that way.
So I'm going to go back to something that Councilmember Han said in his statement the other day. And that is that one of the high priorities that should be here is that we would take Item Two and Item Thirteen and match those up, and probably outside of Phase Two of the airport would be the number, in fact, even waiting for Phase Two of the airport would become probably the number-one priority for us, in order for the rest of that stuff to fall into place, because that big umbrella that we need to have houses everything else that's underneath it.
Yes, that is the plan, yeah.
But that's not number one.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, again, it wasn't intended to, the items that are listed under the scope of work weren't necessarily intended to go one down the other. It was, again, to pick and choose.
And that's the reason I asked the question about what is the priority for, for these different...
Tasks.
Tasks. And that's what I'm trying to get at, in saying, from council perspective and Councilmember Han's perspective, I think that a master plan of the airport is probably the top of the list. And that's why I'm asking the question about, you know, these are tasks, but when do we set a priority to them?
And typically, I'll answer that one, Councilmember Peralta. Typically, the FAA kind of tells, says, Taos's last master plan was nineteen, I think the official one, if I remember right, they told me it was nineteen eighty-seven. That's number one. So they're going to tell the airport and the town of Taos, this is going to be your project this year. It's on your CIP, it's, and the state, the state aviation division and the FAA, they, when they get their fiscal years, like right now, they're going to meet in October, and they'll talk about all the airports, sixty-five airports or sixty-seven airports in New Mexico, and start talking about, okay, at Questa, we're going to do this. At Taos, they need a master plan. You know, we know their project's going to continue, but along that, we're going to do a master plan. So they do have meetings, and they prioritize basically for you. They, they kind of ask you what you want, but they know what you need.
Well, and I understand that, but I'm just trying to say is that I think from our standpoint, there should be some recommendation to the FAA as to a prioritization that we see from, from our public's position on these sort of things, because that's who we represent.
Absolutely.
And so I'm just saying is that at some point in time, we need to sit down and try to figure some of this out.
Supported, supported with a master plan.
And we do get, I see, we work with John in the airport on CIPs, and that, the master plan is always, because of the prior injunction, the master plan has always been there, and it's always just gotten burnt down, so. And then it came to fruition with the, with the runway coming up, that kind of superseded everything. So the master plan, for instance, is always, you know, we work, we work with John Thompson in the airport, and the, and the town of Taos as far as, and the state. We sit down, we go over CIPs, we do CIP drafts, we send them to the state, they redline them, saying, hey, we want, we want this to happen. Give it to John, state says this. There is, I mean, the town does tell the state what they want.
One other thing, Councilor Peralta and Councilman and Mayor, your master plan is slated for two thousand and fifteen federal money, and that was submitted last year to them. With, John, we have to submit your CIP and your ODO, which is an objective...
Overall development.
Overall development plan. And they accepted it, like Mike says, right now, the state and the feds are going to go through and make sure they have that in their budget to fund that project, but you were slated for that last year. You know, we're, we start putting together your wishlist, your CIP, this actually starting now in October and November for next year's projects. So it's kind of a give and take, and then they, they meet and they decide what their budget is and what monies are available. So you are slated for the master plan in two thousand and fifteen.
And approximate date for that, just to...
When federal money comes available.
As it's referred to Congress.
So sometime before October?
Well, two thousand and thirteen...
If the feds will create a budget?
It should be. They, they require all our stuff ready, if it's designed by May first, so that's when they like to make the announcement that they're going to have money available for those projects. So, May first, let's say, that's the blanket answer they always give us, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Peralta, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, gentlemen, French. I guess, being of average intelligence, here's the question. What we're talking about here is Phase Two. What are we talking about?
If you're referring to this, Councilman, this is not Phase Two. This is actually, can you see if I can do this? You have a, you are RFP for master, for professional services, okay? We, three, three companies apply to be your airport engineer. That's what this is for. Now, what we all applied for are to do the work that are listed on the sheet, okay? So those are individual task assignments, we're not even there yet.
Right.
What, what's before you is the, what they call, the FAA calls the master service agreement. So that is what this is for. That's what you're getting, that's what the council's looking before you today, is the master service agreement. And that, again, the sponsors are required to do that per FAA every four years. Well, our four years is up, it's, our contract's up. Our, our master service agreement is up. So the town advertised, got, whatever Mr. Espinoza said, I can't remember, three?
Three.
Three responses. So with that, that's, that's what's before you, is the master service agreement, to get, to get an engineering group on board, to work for the, you and the airport. Now, these task orders are eligible, because the FAA requires you to list the specific items. On, when you go out to RFP, you're required, excuse me, you're required to list items on your RFP. So all the respondents to the RFP basically talk about their, you know, their knowledge of the projects listed. So that's what they graded everybody on. Now, that's what's before you, is the master service agreement for an engineering firm. Now, the, with the, with the master service agreement, the, the firm that is selected is now eligible to do the, to do the work that's on this, this service agreement. Now, those, like French had said, those become, you know, individual task orders. Like task order A for this next fiscal year would be the, would be the Phase Two, and B might be your, your master plan. So that's just an example.
So I guess what is a concern to me is that I don't know what the technical accounting term is, Marietta, but when you, when you get a bid in, and then you change the bid midstream, in other words, I tell you I'm going to do something for a hundred bucks, and then I come back a month later, and it's, oh, by the way, I forgot to add that great elbow over there, it'll be a hundred, it'll be another twenty. Is that what I'm seeing happening here?
No, 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 Councilmember Han.
Okay.
There's no money involved right now. It's just the process. You either have a bid with money, they sell bids, and they give you a price. These are professional services, so it's based on qualifications. So they, Molson Corbin and Delta, I think, were the three that proposed, and they all probably had qualifications, they're engineers, they have certificates, but the ranking system, I don't know if French has it, but they rank them up to a hundred points, and maybe familiar with the project, they get thirty points. He might have that there. And so the committee, who was French and those other two...
Right.
...evaluated all the proposals and looked at them. There's no cost involved, and whenever they bring a task order, according to the agenda item, it says it has to come to you, no matter the amount, it seems like.
Right, and then I guess I'm confused, because as Councilman Peralta tried to help me with this, but it says down here, you know, number four, new runway, taxiway ramp areas. I thought that's what we were doing in Phase Two. And so why now is that a special task order? Forgive my ignorance, you guys.
No, no, is that Phase Two design?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Han, when we put the RFQ out, we came up with this, we put a, together a list of tasks that we thought we would need for the next twelve months or the next seventy-two months. In the, in the actual RFQ, there is some language in there that, that says...
Seventy-two or seventy...
That we would, we would like to consider what is listed, but we are not limited to that, nor do we have to issue that task. Again, it's, this is, this is giving, giving us the flexibility to develop the airport as the governing body sees fit, and we have a little bit of latitude to do that under the RFQ. as the governing body sees fit, and we have a little bit of latitude to do that under the RFQ, because it wasn't, it wasn't, it was a request for qualifications, not, not a specific proposal.
And, and, Councilman, what, what I see and what it's been explained to me and working with the county, basically, we need an engineer of record, okay? Basically, there are engineer of record there, and, and to get an engineer of record, you have to have some scope of work
Mm-hmm.
to have an engineer of record. So to qualify for additional FAA money, we have to have an engineer of record. So they are our engineer of record. These are just recommendations of scope of work. That's not necessarily, they'll do any of these, but they're our engineer of record. So in the event we need an engineer for any of these scopes of work, we have an engineer of record. So to be able to move forward to obtain more funding through FAA, FAA, we have to have that engineer of record. And basically, that's what we're doing here today, is awarding them a contract, because they'll be our engineer of record, to be able to do any of this scope of work that is listed here. Not necessarily they will do it, because it might not be needed, but to be able to obtain any additional funding, we have to, again, have that engineer of record, so.
So, thank you. So, uh, for your time period is up.
Yes, sir.
And now we need to go out for an RFQ. And what I'm hearing then is that Armstrong is, has won, so to speak, that RFQ?
Yes.
And Molten Corbin and Delta, or whoever the other company was, just came in second and third place, or not even in the same regley field?
Right, second and third.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Peralta.
Wouldn't it be better for this to be a four-year term contract with renewable every year than a single-year contract, is the way I read it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Peralta, it's, it's for up to one year, and then renewable for three years after that. And again, it would come before the, the governing body for approval.
Every year.
E- every year, that's correct.
Up to four years.
Up to four years, yes.
That's not the way I read the term.
Where, where are you re-
Uh, let's see, this would be under, it's number three, under section. Page three, section three, yeah. Can I check to, so, so, September twenty.
It would be ten, that's three and four on pages three, page three, five and three.
So you have the first portion, which is the term, which is the one year, and then you go into the renewal, uh, may exceed a total period of four years.
What does this say, two years? Okay. You know, the, the language in here, the way I read it, paragraph three discounts paragraph four. It says, "The term of this contract shall be, or shall terminate, September twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen." That is a definite end of the contract period. You can't renew it.
May.
It should be May.
Well, um, it, this is the standard language in all Taos and Taos contracts that I've seen, and I don't know if it's the same that we were putting in the county, but I think that it is three, shall terminate, and then four says has the right to renew subject to, for, for a year for a total of four years.
Yeah, but I mean, just construction of language, I'm just looking at it, and it says that when it says shall.
Yeah.
It says shall, it's not maybe.
No, I think, I think, well, my opinion is the court will construe it as renewable for up to four years, which is consistent with the government.
Right, and I understand that. I'm just saying is that the way I would read this language, it says, no, you can't use paragraph four, because paragraph three says it's terminal at the end of one year.
My experience is, is on a renewal, it amends the paragraph termination, and you do the, you know, preferably, you do the renewal prior to the termination. Sometimes that doesn't get done, in my experience, but, uh, that's what I would like to happen.
Yeah. Any further questions, Council?
I'm gonna try that one on my grandkids, Fred. I think you're right.
You shall.
You shall do your chores, okay? Next week.
You know, back when.
I'd rather refuse.
Back when I was in the legislature, they changed all the language and got rid of mains, totally.
It said chow mean chow.
Chow mean show. And they took out the wills, so that it was a different, and that's what I'm, and that's why I'm using that constructive language here. So if you wanna say in there that this contract.
Will be considered?
Well, anyway, I'm not gonna get into construction at this point.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we would wanna point out that in the contract version that was handed out to you, uh, not the novice version, on page four, uh, section E has been added at discussion between myself and, um, town attorney, and that, um, it's our understanding that we, we didn't wanna be kind of where we were before, which is that we're locked in, we have our FAA-approved engineer, and that if we wanna go forward, and we have a timeframe that we have to meet, they come back with a quote that just does not seem reasonable, and that we cannot get approved by FAA or state aviation. As was indicated earlier, we'd be at the option of having to start this process all over again. So, uh, we wanted some language in here, and since what was discussed was that we have the opportunity that if FAA or Mexico DOT does not accept it, that we would be able to go back and negotiate, uh, or either party could walk away on that particular project. And that may be implied, but we didn't see any language in here that actually put that into effect, so we wanted to be sure we had language that covered it. And I, I don't think it'd be objectionable since it, to the, to Armstrong, since it pretty much describes the process we've used all along. And there's twenty other places both parties have the opportunity to opt out of this. And that's really all it is.
I haven't seen this, so this is the first I've seen this, so.
What's with the contract?
Well, given that information, I guess I would defer to Armstrong how they feel with the language added to the contract.
Obviously, we would take it to our, our legal, just to make sure to, yeah. They're usually the ones we deal, have a lot of FAA language in it, and, I mean, just being handed this now, I, I'm not gonna comment on that. I'd have to take it to my.
Your attorney.
My board and, uh, and our attorney, and make sure that they're okay with the language.
So I guess Steph would ask that the inserted language be included in, in any approval, with the stipulation to the town attorney that he can, if it needs to be tweaked, to correctly reflect standardized FAA language, that he can, uh, make the appropriate adjustments and then bring it back, uh, to council without us losing, uh, having downtime, we wouldn't have an engineer.
Just for clarification, uh, Mr. Bellis, on, on this contract, uh, that's the only difference in language, is compared to the contract they signed last year?
That's correct. Um, there is also, uh, in the old contract, there was some references to CFRs, FAA CFRs, code federal regulations. For whatever purpose, that wasn't included in these, so I did insert language in, uh, paragraph twenty-eight, I believe, which is on page eight. It says that, um, the contract will comply with all federal, state, and local laws and policies. Um, and I will also say that the language at one E, which Mr. Bellis was just referring to, on page four, is my understanding of the, um, current practice with the FAA, that if they feel that the amount proposed or did under the tasks that were assigned is excessive, they will reject it, and then there's a third party that views it, and then it's subject to negotiation. So that's the current practice. Under the current contract, it's expiring at the end of this month, and so it's just included in this new contract, just because there's, so there's no downtime. So I don't see there's any problem with it. I don't think Armstrong's counsel wants that, but since that's been in practice the last four years, as I understand it. Having heard all this just since yesterday.
And, and we did have a negotiation with Armstrong under last contract.
Sir.
And all this does is just puts it in the language in there, so there's no question as to, to what we did and agreed to by Armstrong.
Sir.
So no further questions, I'll move for approvals, Mayor.
I have a motion for.
Second.
Approval on the second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging out with us all day. We'd keep you here to one if we could, but.
It's almost up.
Are you done now, French?
Yeah, go ahead. You had a question?
Could I, this is not, uh, on our agenda, so it's probably inappropriate, but French, um, what kinda, uh, Gino Sanchez's property over there on, uh, on, uh, I forget the name of the street now, but.
Tru Hilling. Tru Hilling.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Any progress there?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Han, um, again, we had contacted, um, Phoenix Mechanical.
Yeah.
And we were supposed to get that thing coordinated, and that's when the water link, water leak sprung.
Yes, I know.
However, I did meet with Bob Draper, um, just right before we came to the council meeting this afternoon, um, so we'll jump on that tomorrow.
Okay.
But Bob Draper's the, the plumber that we retained to repair or replace the pump, yes.
So Wednesday?
Yes.
My, my concern is.
This is, which one?
Uh, Gino Sanchez.
We've, we've had that conversation.
You have, I have. Poor French is tired of hearing from us, but my concern is for the man's health. Uh, he recently had a brain or a skull injury, and the, the damn thing is waking him up every morning at three or, you know. So we're gonna kill the man unless we straighten this out. And I don't think we wanna lose a citizen.
Okay. You'll just give us an update on it, French, will you?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Thanks for letting me, uh, just, and thank you.
So we'll go under Town Manager's Report. We're having our own discussion over here, sorry. Uh, Town Manager's Board, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, Mr. Bellis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at the direction of the council, we had investigated whether or not we could expand the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and, uh, town attorney has concluded that we are bound by the state statute at this time unless the state legislation changes. So we are limited to those five persons and by categories as identified within the law, which I believe is, uh, two hotel owners, two people on the board representing recreation-related industries, and one person at large.
And Councilor Peralta, I'm gonna go to Mr. Lopez before I come back to you.
Well, I just think Councilman Peralta, in this case, shall does mean show, isn't that what it is?
I agree. On that part, see. The other part I have a concern.
I would say.
On the enforcement.
No, I know. Oh.
So, Councilor Peralta?
Well, of the enforcement, if I could just respond to that, I think that there are ways to enforce this, four ways from Sunday, I think there really are. I've never seen any statute that has more provisions, more enforcement for this particular one. It has, the attorney general or district attorney can enforce it, the county clerk can enforce it by filing a criminal complaint, asking for criminal penalty, and I, as town attorney, can sue for collection. So I don't know what else you can do to do that, and I'm happy to do that. I'm a great collection lawyer, and if we need to collect, well, I'll be happy to do it. I love.
This, this has nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with collection, okay? The provision that I put in the law back in eighty-nine allowed for the ability of the municipalities and the counties to audit, okay?
It's the record, providing the records, is what you're talking about. And that's.
But it doesn't.
We need to collect the records, too.
And what I'm indicating is that that provision that I put in there doesn't talk about the requirement of these, the institutions to provide the records, okay? And so that's what I'm trying to say, is that we need to clarify that so that the collection language would apply to audits as well. And, and though that's what I brought up before the municipal league, and they agreed to, to look into it, and so they're in the process now of, of doing that research, and I'll, next week or this week, I'll get in touch with them to find out what they found on that. But the way I read the language, it didn't relate to any of the collection methods, so that's where I have a problem with, of enforcement, and it's the same thing with other municipalities that have looked at this and said, we can't force people to give us our, their records to audit. You can, you can, you can do a estimate and file agreements based on the estimate, but you can't do anything to prove whether your estimate's right or wrong.
So you have that reports of the receipts? So it's in our ordinance, it may not be in the statute, but in Form twelve oh seven oh, each vendor should make a report by the twenty-fifth day of each month on forms provided by the town's cashier's office of the receipts for lodging in the preceding calendar month.
Correct. Now, if they don't do that, you have the right to do an estimate and file a lien on that estimate, and then collect on that lien. However, there's also provision within the law that says that you can audit, but the audit doesn't say that they have to turn over their records to you to audit. All that report says is that they have to give you a report every month on what they figure is that they owe you in, in lodger tax, but if they don't give it to you, the only thing you could do estimated and file lien.
Or file a criminal complaint for imposition of the misdemeanor account.
Correct, but if I want to audit their records, I don't have the same authority. That's what I'm trying to get straightened out, so that we can make these people, 'cause last year we had, what was it, six? No, no, that was seven or eight businesses that wouldn't give us sufficient records to audit, and we had two that wouldn't give us any records at all. In fact, they wouldn't even return our phone calls.
Yeah, we can care of that.
So I'm just trying to get some enforcement in there that I can, that I feel that we have a tangible source to, to do something with that, that I feel that, that we, I neglected to do when I put that into the law.
So our ordinance may be a little different from the statute, but if you look at four twelve one fifty?
Yeah, the, the ordinance needs to be updated to match the statute, 'cause I looked at that, too. There's some number of provisions in there that don't match the statute.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Peralta, uh, if, if the league is gonna look at that, one of the things I might suggest to be helpful is that in other states, we have cooperating entities, particularly counties and municipalities, and we've had that dialogue here about the county, uh, which has far less lodger tax than we do, combining their efforts for a greater effect here. We, we don't seem to have a provision in the law that would actually allow that. And if you have two bodies, both that have priorities and that are talking together, it becomes as, uh, effective as the Intergovernmental Council, which all gets together and lists legislative priorities, then they all go out and fund their own priorities.
Send me a memo on that, and I'll take it to the council.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Oh, really?
I agree. So we don't, there's no action needed on this item, so we already took care of item B. We'll go to item C, purchase of water rights. I know there's a possibility of a, uh, executive session, but Mr. Bellis?
Yeah, this is now, and, and, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is an item we're gonna defer due to the length of the hour, uh, to. We think we generally have the consensus of, of what council would like, but just to bring you up to date, um, you previously took action under the, uh, uh, earlier, Jacob Caldwell, the earlier town attorney, where there was a piece of property, um, that had not been developed, but had transferred water rights to us. Subsequently, we returned those w- rights, the deeds were filed. Subsequently, we returned those rights, the deeds were filed. The majority of parties representing that property have approached the town about a formal offer to purchase those rights. I believe it was five acre feet.
Yeah, we're gonna do this in executive session, or?
I don't think we need to. In the discussion, we're still talking about prices and that's what I'm just saying. Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Please.
There have been discussions about the purchase of water rights off of the Rio Cerro, the Rio Hondo, that we need to offset water rights that we need to use, plus we need water rights at the airport. As part of the beta settlement, we were granted, and I'm gonna throw out a figure which I'm not accurate with, but about thirty-six acre feet in those areas that would not be challenged by the pueblo. These acre feet that are being offered to us are in that watershed, so they meet the requirements that we need to have water at the airport in order to, for the future of the airport. We don't have any water rights out there, so we can't even fight a fire. If we had a plane catch on fire, we don't have any water out there. So we need to have at least five acre feet of water out there in order to, for public safety reasons. And so these water rights, that was the reason they were negotiated in the settlement, in order for us to get those rights, in order to put out there, plus some other water rights that we need for offset. And so the deal we're looking at here is, is the offer of some of those water rights, which would meet that need that we have at the airport for public safety.
Absolutely correct. Thank you very much, Mayor Peralta. And at this point, what we're all coming to you with is that, to inform you that those rights have formally been offered to us and to allow staff the opportunity to negotiate and when we believe we have a reasonable agreement, based on a fair market price, come back to you with a proposed contract for the transfer.
What is the fair market price? I'm curious. I don't wanna get a president, so. It's like...
Yeah, that's one of the executives.
We will find out. And I just wanna throw something else.
Learn as I go.
Mr. Lopez and Mr. Bellis, and at that point, somebody will determine if these are surface or, or...
These are, these are...
Are they surface water rights or these are consumptive? Somebody will make that determination and bring that to us, too, at the same time. I don't want an answer now.
Yeah, the offer shows them it's consumptive.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
Unless we hear otherwise, we'll assume that we have the continued direction of the council to enter into that negotiation.
Okay. Other matters, are there any other matters that...
We've got a couple here.
Well, no, matters for reports from the mayor, is that what you're talking about, Councilman? Okay, we have an item under, it says other matters.
Yeah. By the way, if I could, on other matters, I'd like to go back to what you said about the lodger's tax. I think we ought to look at changing that law to allow for additional board members, because it does say shall be five.
Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember, what did you, I didn't hear what you just said. You wanna go back to...
I was just mentioning that we should go back to the legislature and ask for additional board members on the lodger's tax advisory board, take away the shall and shall be a minimum of five and allow the municipality or the county to put additional members on there if they want. It's kind of a foolish limitation, I think.
Okay. So we'll go on then to item thirteen, matters and reports from the mayor. Joint Health Advisory Board, this was brought to our attention at the last meeting at the Health Advisory Board, that two members were from the town, two members were from the county and other members, so we, right now, we only have one member from the town, and so we need another member to sit on this Health Advisory Board. I just, I know Councilor Hahn has been attending those meetings, I mean, just, it needs to be an appointment by the board, so I know he's been attending them and I think he could attend them as a representative of the town and I would just make that recommendation that...
It's right up his alley.
Just one, one thing to remember on this is that if we appoint two members from the council onto the board, that means that without declaring an open meeting, we can't have anybody else from the council visiting.
Right.
Just information.
Yeah.
So what if we appoint, Rick, you wanna go to more meetings?
Yeah. Say, "Hey, Willie."
I would defer to the stronger wish of the council members to serve on this.
So we can have a, if, depending on the wishes of the council, probably would need a motion to move forward on that.
What's your recommendation, Mr. Mayor?
My recommendation is to keep Mr. Hahn there and...
So move.
We have a second and further discussion. I hope you, I hope not none from you, you're gonna go, right?
You're gonna go where you go first.
Call for the vote.
Yeah, he'd be there anyway.
Councilmember Peralta?
I have a speech.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
So, other matters, we just received a letter from Kit Carson Electric thanking us for the support and an agreement was, agreed on and just reminding us that, you know, the mediation agreement with Kit Carson and the New Mexico member cooperatives have agreed to a temporary rate increase of point zero 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 two seconds per kilowatt, which will remain in effect through December thirty-first, and what that means is it'll, you know, about a dollar and ten cents per month is what we're looking at in an increase, which would, you know, is a savings of about two point four million overall. New Mexico members have saved about twenty-five million. So, again, you know, it's a great thing that, you know, we jumped on board with them and it's something that, you know, I think we'll see some progress with and move forward with. So I just want everybody to know that we did receive a letter and thanking us for our efforts. Any others?
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping, Mr. Bellis, that you might be able to talk a little bit about the congos coming and the plan a little bit and maybe the, how it's working in with the fall arts, in a nutshell.
Mr. Mayor, just in between there, if I could just make one real quick suggestion. With regards to our, our meeting agendas, previously, we used to do what they used to call a consent agenda. That took care of some of the housekeeping items way earlier on in the meeting, like the transfer of personal property, that type of stuff, if it wasn't anything that was real adversarial, that the council could approve, you know, at the, at the beginning of the meeting and knock all those items out, and at the same time, still giving full discretion to the council to pull any one of those items off the consent for further discussion, but I would ask if maybe we still entertain that so that our agenda shortened up just a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Lopez will look at that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Now, congos.
Congos, it's gonna be a fun night. Should be aware, you may get a few phone calls. From a public safety standpoint, we made a decision to close the plaza the night before so that we don't have vehicles on there. It is a large gathering. I share the concern of the police chief that, you know, we don't want a car in the middle of a crowd or a large cooler and we don't know what it is. So it allows for security sweeps, the bus for the band comes in at night. It also leaves us the night set up. There'll be lighting in the trees, there'll be an electronic version of a waterfall tree, there'll be art by Promo Hobo up on some of the roofs, balconies. The sidewalks should be painted up for the paseo, there'll be an interactive piece of art on the balcony of the old courthouse. It's definitely young, definitely multicultural, it'll fit in with the paseo. We start off with Mariachi Teo Quatan, which, if nobody's heard them, they're doing some really beautiful classic music, and every once in a while, they break out a Mariachi version of SpongeBob SquarePants, so there's a lot of humor to it. We have a couple of girls that used to come to the farmer's market that are celloists and violinists that also do very serious stuff, but do some humorous stuff. And we're going to have a flash mob out from the Tous Pueblo of Hale Creek, who are gonna come in with their hand drums and then go around to central drum and then do some round dances. So definitely a little flavor of everything. And then, of course, we have the revolving door circus, which does stilts, hula hoops, we left the swords and fire out for this one. But then they light themselves up in LEDs and go around the plaza, so I think it's gonna be a really good time for everybody. There's two live remotes, one by K-Tow to handle the Tous area, starting at four o'clock, one for Santa Fe by KABC, KBAC. So there's been a lot of hype in Santa Fe. They're giving away a lot of tickets to Kings of Leon and other concerts, so we're expecting a good crowd. Some of the stores are really getting into it. For example, Tous Mountain Outfitters is actually getting their own band inside the store, entertain folks. We'll have up by the gorge, four or five food vendors. We are not doing alcohol, we're limiting the food, so what we're hoping is we will pass out something that looks like this, actually will be this, but on the back, there'll be a map of the town that'll list places after the concert, before and after the concert that people can go if they wanna get a beer, and we're encouraging the other places to have bands that night so that we'll send the folks out there. So kind of one of the lessons we learned from Mumford is spread the wealth a little better. But we think we'll get a good reaction, and it'll be interesting to see, just like Mumford had that blip you heard about earlier, will we get a bump here at the end of the season where people are complaining that, you know, they're hurting out there, particularly the gallery owners. So that, the paseo starts that night with some acts, the robot, some of the other things are up. And then Friday night is the paseos night completely, and then that ties into Saturday and Sunday. We are going to do the shuttles throughout. If people have the passport, it's free. We'll do free from the transport from the county complex and the other lots for all of the events, and what we'll basically do is calculate what the fares would have been and charge that as a entertainment cost as part of the lodger's tax package of that twenty thousand we held back to do this event.
We just need to encourage the merchants to stay open late and to find ways to attract two to three thousand people to come into their shops.
I am working on that tomorrow.
Well, it's, it's a personal thing, personal responsibility as well. It's not just for us to do that.
Councilor Peralta?
Couple of questions for you is, what time does the program start on the plaza on Thursday?
We're telling people that entertainment will actually start about four o'clock, but we're expecting, based on what we've heard from people, that some might get there about two o'clock.
And then, congos is gonna be on at what time, 'cause that's not on here?
You're right, it's not.
Intentionally.
I think it's advertised at six-thirty, but we're gonna wait for sunset, which we timed at just about seven o'clock here, that it's over the back of the buildings on the plaza, so you can really see the group with the lighting.
Okay. I'm just thinking that it would be nice to tell people when this is gonna be, because there may be a group that, and people wanna come in specifically for that, and sometimes they get a little bit upset when they don't know when the main attraction is gonna be on. The other thing is that the contract with Tous Solar Music Festival is for how much?
I believe it's fifteen thousand dollars, and they're paying everybody. The only thing we're paying directly would be...
Including grocery receipts tax for advertising?
Plus grocery receipts tax.
Okay. Because I just saw two checks to them, so...
Yeah, the way we set it up is two sets of deliverables. One was to deliver the signed contracts for the entertainers and the production equipment, because they have to pay the advance, and we found that's the biggest problem, the getting groups, is having the advance locally. And then the second one is due at the time of the show, so the fifteen split in half.
Councilor Consuls?
Rick, if I could ask a question, just real quick to, with regards to crowd control and maybe chief as well, too. What are we doing for band safety? This isn't your Thursday night special typical band.
Hopefully, there's no young women joining.
There, well, that's the, well, concern is young women running up and stealing one of them.
If there's not, we got the wrong band.
Is there gonna be an additional barricade around the gazebo, I guess, is what I'm asking for? Something like, with what maybe Fiesta's does?
There's a little bit of operational security that we're doing on this one, so that has been addressed, and that is one of our concerns, and I think we're gonna be okay. There is a section of the approach that is gonna be quarantined off, so I think we're gonna be okay.
Are we gonna add extra security?
Yeah, we have state... Yeah, state, state police is assisting us, as well as our people, so, yeah. And then I believe they're also getting a private security company to assist with the van, with the, with the tour bus.
Okay. It's gonna be a hopping weekend on the plaza this weekend, it starts Thursday, ends Sunday. There'll be farmer's market, too. I mean, there's gonna be a lot happening, so...
Rest stop Monday and then San G on Tuesday.
Yeah.
We are using our crews to do cleanup, so it will be open for business on Friday morning with the plaza.
All right. And then, okay, we'll go on to matters and reports from council, consideration and proclamation regarding annual arts festival honries. Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was an idea that came up when, this is the fortieth year of the Fall Arts Festival, and they came in and asked us if we would do a proclamation honoring the Fall Arts Festival, and we had it written up, and you would have been approving it, but then they came back and said, "Can you recognize some of our founders of that?" And then we came back and we had another discussion. And one of the things, again, we, all of this this weekend is about trying to make a shift and trying to pump up the arts and get that tourism back here. And we realized that the, we have a number of people in our community that have been honored by the governor and her governor's arts awards, Robert Maribel, I think, is scheduled for October. And we were thinking, why don't we do that? Wouldn't it be a good idea if there was a mayor's award or a town council award every year given out at the Fall Arts Festival honoring, in several categories, a founder in the arts, a musician, a visual artist, any number of categories, but to try to highlight around the state and get some publicity for people we have here in the community that are pretty prominent. And I guess we wanted a kind of a nod and consensus before we moved on that.
I think it's a great idea, and I think this is something that we should do. You know, I'm sure, as everything, we do one thing, but somebody will be mad because they didn't receive it, but I think, you know...
Well, maybe it's something we could do more often and consider putting up a board over at the visitor's center that, you know, honors people like maybe every, every quarter and change it and put it up on the board so, you know, they can see their picture and their name, and people can see their picture and their name, or their family member, friend, or...
I think this is a start, so...
Okay. So we, what we'll probably do then, if it's okay with everyone, is, so it isn't controversial for this year, is Fall Arts has asked us if we could honor four of their founders that created the Fall Arts Festival, and then we'll develop our categories for the coming year.
Okay. Okay. Go on to item B, other matters. Councilor Peralta, I know you had a question about, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to remind the mayor that my six months are up.
Oh, okay. Is that, was that the beep that was going on?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll bring this up on our next meeting, and we'll put it on our agenda for Mayor Proten, and we're gonna switch out every six months.
The other thing that I wanna, what was it I talked about?
About the neighborhoods around the...
Oh, yes. I'm trying to remember if it was an email or something like that, but I thought we had a little bit of a discussion about doing a support, public support for the neighborhood...
had a little bit of a discussion about doing a support, public support for the neighborhood associations around the airport, to support their position on changing the flight patterns, if, if we can do that with the FAA at, at the time that they feel it's appropriate.
We have, Mr. Mayor, council, we have already forwarded that letter, and with the request to be able to do that to the FAA and state aviation.
I, I understand that, but I just thought that we would do that publicly, so that the community knows that the council is, is in favor of that.
I believe they are actually waiting for a formal letter from the council acknowledging, supporting that, so if, on the agenda, I will, I will so draft it, and have it available at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, one more thing, I just wanted to follow up on some I, I mentioned a, a couple of meetings ago, about putting up a community board, maybe also at the visitor's center, just to keep the community updated about everything and anything, from meetings to football games, to, you know, honorees, or just everything that, you know, we don't have Jeff hanging his signs anymore, really.
He started.
Well, I, I saw that with the gas, but, you know, just to announce meetings, things the community should, should know and attend.
Mr. Bellis is, is, in, in, in that same, like, I think we talked about, we have that electronic board, that, and I know it doesn't meet, it's, it's small.
Really small. We dug it out. It's, it's very small. I don't think it would do, you, you wouldn't really notice it, but I, I think we have to look at something more conventional, and.
The one at the equal park?
Four by eight sheet of plywood, that size.
The one at the equal park?
The, the one at the equal park is big.
That's the one I had proposed, 'cause they, they don't utilize it real well, not for what they utilize it for. I was talking about pulling it and moving it, yeah, and.
Put it over there, if, if it meets with, you know, within our criteria of our land use, and put it over there, and, and, I mean, that's a great idea.
It'll meet at the park, too.
Counselor Cantu, I think, you know.
It's a violation of side order.
Okay.
It's a violation of side order.
Oh, is it violation of side order?
Yeah, you can't have internally lit signs.
Oh, that's in the historic district.
So, so you just put a, put a couple of lights on it, and it'll.
Meets it.
Well, there are certain rare areas in town you don't need to be caveman with, you need to join the modern 21st century.
We'll figure it out.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask one more question?
Please.
Rick, Luis had asked me to ask, what was going on with power supply at the plaza this week because of congos? Did you guys figure that out? I know, we just didn't want to be tripping stuff.
No, no, there was a, no, it's pretty light usage, in fact, this band has really high-tech electronic equipment that is all digital, so it uses about, I mean, it plugs in the regular 120. And there was a meeting at 7:30 yesterday with Luis's engineers, and all the sound people, and everybody for the paseo, everything that needed lighting, and we, I, I believe we worked all that out.
Okay, good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, IGC and landfill, no meetings this month, but I do want to bring up a couple airport issues for the council to consider. Following up on a department head's idea of there being a citizen awareness and, and public input around the construction board, I'd like for the council and mayor to consider that the construction board advertise and hold a monthly update forum, if you will, where a public meeting would review the work that has happened the previous month, and the work that is scoped out for the subsequent month. And I'm just calling this a progress update forum by the airport construction board. And it'd be advertised and open to any and all. And the idea behind it is just to lay out what has happened that month, and what's about to happen in the subsequent month.
Do we have an airport construction board?
Well, I keep calling it that.
Advisory board, yeah.
Well, no, the airport advisory board is different. There is, from what I understand, an, an actual group of engineers and people on the project who get together, I want to say weekly, to look at the project and, and brainstorm solutions to problems and that kind of thing. Well, once a month, yeah, John is not here, and French is not here.
John Armstrong and French, I imagine.
Citizens Airport Committee?
Well, I don't even want to call it that. It's, it's really just a forum. This is, this is what happened during the month of September, this is what we project in October. Neighborhood associations may be interested in that, and others as well. But I think it's gonna take a council directive.
No, no, councilman, what I, what I would suggest is to save us having to pay a lot of overtime and paying the engineers twice, is we could take our regular monthly meeting of the airport advisory group, and then prior to that meeting, we could, since the engineers and everybody that's gonna be on the project management committee is gonna be there to report anyway, we could do a half hour, where any of the elected officials, any of the neighborhoods come in, and we could do exactly what you suggested.
The key would be advertising that, or getting out a PSA of some sort.
Sure, and, and we will copy the neighborhood association chairpersons that are impacted every month.
And then the other issue I'd like to bring up regarding the airport is the airport advisory board. And I would like to propose that we broaden that board to make it more regional, to include Taos County, a representative from Taos County on that board, Ski Valley, the neighborhood associations, or, and, and other interested municipalities, governments, et cetera, to kind of broaden the scope of the board. Right now, it's just five. I don't want to make it huge and cumbersome, but I do feel that the airport advisory board needs to, to become more regional and more representative of, of the public at large. I think there may be an advantage in reaching out to Taos County, obviously, the Ski Valley, neighborhood associations, and so on, to, if we're gonna make this airport thing work, let's cast a wide net.
Is that a Floyd question, though? I mean, like the tax advisory board, if we were only allowed five, is that something?
I just read that.
Five's kind of the magic number to get anything done.
I.
We have the landfill advisory board, and that's a regional board, it has Questa and Tuskie Valley and.
It's still a five-member board, though, right?
I think there's more. I, I went to a couple of meetings, and I was over at the cabinet, it was a full room around the table.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, those are all governmental entities, too.
Yeah, it's two per entity.
So, anyway, pending the mayor and council and manager and legal's approval, I, I would like to look at us reorganizing and, and casting a wider net for the airport advisory board. And I've not talked to anyone on that board, so I have no idea how they feel about it. I know they had a meeting today, just when we were meeting, so.
I think most of them that are on there, Kirk and Ron Guard, have some relation to aviation, right?
Pretty much all pilots.
Francisco.
Except for past knowledge.
He used to work for an airline.
Aero Mexico or something.
Yeah. So how do you want to approach that? If the council wants to even delve into that a little bit?
Well, we would have to, since it's not an action item, we would have to draft an amendment to the ordinance for the airport advisory board, and bring that back to you.
Okay.
Which we could do at the next meeting, since it seems so far off, even for an ordinance, we'd meet the advertising requirements between now and October 14th.
Okay.
Thirty days?
It has to be forty days prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I would do it one after.
So, yeah, I don't think we'll meet that.
One after. So what we could do is bring a draft back at the special meeting on the 7th?
For discussion.
For discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can make the decision whether you want to post it for, in ordinance.
Two weeks later.
I have one more question.
Thirty days later.
Thirty days. And then the other issue is, we'll just start advertising the, how did you put it, Rick? Before the airport advisory board meeting, we'll have an update forum?
Yeah, pre-meeting for our construction progress report.
Can I go ahead and disseminate that pre-meeting business? Is that okay with the council?
I think.
Do you want to think about it?
Yeah, I'd like to think on that.
So we're, we'll revisit that on the 7th?
And again, I guess we're gonna have to figure out when construction is gonna start, so that there is something to disseminate.
Right, right.
And I think, you know, for me, I think that, you know, it's not belaborate, you know, kill it would be format, too. Like, is it strictly informational, not a pissing contest?
Got it.
That's what I'd be, my concerns.
Well, I think information and question, but, I mean, the debate is, it's about accountability now, and veracity.
Are you talking about, you're gonna disseminate when the construction's gonna start?
No, 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 no.
After construction starts. It'd be a, kind of an update, how construction's moving forward, and what's the next process for the next one?
Because if we, if we have to, everything has to wait pending the issuance by the cabinet of permit.
Yeah, and I'd suggest we not say anything publicly until that happens.
Okay. Yeah, well, we haven't even begun construction.
It's been indicated to Mr. Lopez, myself, they'll make a determination as to the completeness of the application by Friday.
Road closures? I mean, who knows? It may be particularly important for the neighborhood associations out there to be aware of what's happening. But I, Councilman Gonzalez, the debate is over. Now we gotta make this thing work, which I don't think it is, but I'm gonna work my you-know-what off to try and make it work.
By ability, we will, I will go down fighting too.
To make it work.
Let's work together to make it work.
So do you have something else?
Yeah, one, one more question, excuse me, I'm still learning as I go, but, you know, I think it had been discussed some time back about having one of the meetings being a workshop meeting, so that'll be a lot easier for us to discuss just stuff. So, you know.
Got it.
Does that have to be brought in as a motion, and everybody vote on it, or?
Yeah, put it on the next agenda, and let's just do it.
Madam Clerk, what, what's on the agenda so far for that special meeting?
The only item on the agenda is that public hearing for the North Central Regional Transit District.
Would, would that be acceptable to add another hour and a half on to that meeting, which I don't think is gonna be all that long? It's just basically a presentation by NCRTD to us, and then you would vote on the resolution that you've already seen, to participate?
Yeah.
And then have a work study.
And then we'll do, go into a work study right after the public hearing.
Yep.
Can you note that?
I, I think the question is whether we should have two regular meetings, or have one regular meeting and one workshop meeting, where we discuss these things, and then they go to the agenda the next meeting.
We have, Mr. Mayor, council, we have tried to do that, maybe, now that we're getting away from having the budget approved, that might slow down, but consistently, it seems like where we try to schedule that, things come up that need action within that two-week period.
We will consider that and try that, and if not, it's gonna be a big agenda.
It'll be a special meeting, if we have to vote on something?
Or a workshop.
I only noticed half the stuff on this agenda.
Well, no, I mean, not for the workshop, but.
Yeah, or just putting stuff on that consent agenda, too. So I think we can clear a good chunk of it up, just by one bill.
And for as long as the agenda looked, we did very well. I think we did very well. I mean, we're out of here at 6:30.
Five and a half hours.
That's pretty good, that's pretty good for that length of agenda.
That's pretty good for us.
Oh, that's good.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
Second meeting.
All in favor? Secret office, say no.
Hey, but there's discussion.
Not debatable.
He might be here by himself.